Our students and so they like to take this opportunity to recognize some students. This is actually the wrestling team. So I'd like to call some names of some students who were actually representing Sitka High School on the wrestling team at state. And so when I call your name, please come up and get your recognition. And we want you to stay up here so we can go ahead and make sure that we're getting a picture of everyone. So could I get Aiden Ojala to come up, please? Aiden, why don't you go ahead and let them know a little bit about your match? And if you okay, if you just give real quick, you know, how you scored it and just like, you know, just something you remember from your match.
I wrestle the guy I've been wrestling all year in. He had me hard and I thought that he had to be in for the third place match.
Hi kids, come on down. All right, same question.
I lost both matches, but my first match, I didn't have a mouthguard.
Always bring a brace. Words of wisdom to live by, always wear a mouthguard if you have braces. How about another round of applause? Silas Ferguson, Silas, come on down. All right, same question.
Well, as a sophomore, it was kind of shocking to make it to state. And all my matches, I think, went pretty well for the level that I was wrestling at and the level that my opponents were.
Nice job. Evander Ehrichman? Congratulations. All right.
First match went pretty well. Then after that, my sickness got into me and then kind of lost, but I got four.
And Jason Young. Go ahead.
Oh, I got a second.
Don't make me relive it, man.
So how about another round of applause for our wrestlers here? I also want to take a moment, if I could, we'll get a picture of the wrestlers here. But could I also get the coaches to come up, Mike Callahan and Kurt Bartlett, please come on down. And I'm going to go ahead and hand it over here. Do you want to say a couple of words about this group?
They're really, they were actually really fun to work with this year. They put their nose to the grindstone and their places proved where they got, you know, they went up there and proved themselves. So I'm excited for the years to come with them. I'm losing one of them over there, but we're going to build even more on that.
All right, next we get the opportunity to recognize our Kikushihin spelling bee winners. When I call your name, please come on down. Piper Vaughn, please come down. Congratulations, third place winner. What was the word? Do I have side of us, is it like Mr. Young, don't make me relive it? I'll leave you alone. How much fun did you have doing this spelling bee though? It was a lot of fun?
Yes.
Very nice. How about another round of applause? Quinton, Quinton Richter, please come on down. Congratulations, second place winner. Very nice. And Ruby Richter, please come on down. All right, congratulations. All right, so tell me a little story about, you know, you two. I mean, because it came down to the last word, right? And between you two, how was that? Was that kind of challenging? Was the tension higher or were you excited for each other? Not nervous at all? How about you?
I'm not really nervous.
Not really? All right, let's see, we got a spellers here that aren't nervous at all. How about another round of applause for our Kikushihin.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
How many rounds did it go?
Oh, that's a good question. How many rounds did it go? Eighteen rounds. Very nice.
But these two, didn't they, didn't you guys? You had eight just between the two.
So between the two, say that again. So just between the two, you had eight rounds? Wow, that's impressive. All right, big smile. All right, we got one more in back. Did you get the picture? All right, you're good. All right, how about one more round of applause? And at this time, I will turn it over to the board members who are going to recognize our Halahtini Students of the Month. So if we want to maybe start with Ms. Ward and then we can work our way towards Ms. Teal. Sure, come on, yeah, you can come on up and then.
All right, if we could have Henry Ward come up. Pacific High Student of the Month is Henry Ward. Henry is kind to all students, has great attendance, and works diligently in all his classes. He keeps us laughing with his quick wit and quirky humor. He is deeply passionate about science and engineering and is eager to share conversations with staff and students alike. He is self-directed in exploring his interests. He is a talented artist and he is an athlete on the swim team. Henry always has something positive to contribute and he is a valued member of the Pacific High community. Congratulations.
Don't run away, don't run away. We'll have one take, would be, oh, do you want to come up and be in the picture too? Want that in the picture? Don't run away too far, so we can get a picture of all of the Halahtini winners together. All right, next we have Mr. Moore.
All right, sorry if I say this wrong, but Justin Magalayo, is that it right? Justin has done an outstanding job in all of his classes. He's motivated to extend his learning and finds ways to challenge himself. He often volunteers well, well thought out and thorough answers to questions. He's a critical thinker with great problem solving skills and asks questions when needed. Justin is kind and helpful to his peers and teachers. He's a great teammate when working in groups and helps when others are having a hard time understanding concepts. Justin is our choice for Halahtini Student of the Month.
Um, you did say that right. Do you want to come over here for a picture?
Yeah.
All right, get your certificate. Congratulations again.
I could have Logan Neal from Berenoff Elementary School. Congratulations. And Logan has been selected as the Halahtini Student of the Month because he leads by example. He is so caring and thoughtful in his actions towards others, not only is he a hard worker, but he is also encouraging and helpful to everyone around him. Multiple times a day, he turns to friends around him to see if they need help once he has finished his work. Logan is thoughtful in his answers to class discussions. If someone is doing something by themselves, he is the first one to invite that friend to join his group. He greets everyone with a hug or a wave and a smile. Logan Neal is an excellent selection for Halahtini Student of the Month.
Did everyone want a picture too, is that good? Oh yeah, make sure you guys don't leave. Come on, matter of fact, those of you that have gone already, come on down so we can just wait over here. So I want to make sure we get a picture of all of you together. Thank you.
Where can I find Mackenzie Martin? Mackenzie, the fifth grade student in Mrs. Gondar's class. Mackenzie is an extremely kind, energetic, and accepting student. She's able to make friends with everyone and anyone. Mackenzie has been an advocate for fairness and safety of peers throughout her time to come to the Sika school history. This year, in addition to being an amazing friend, she volunteered to be a member of the Kikushihin fifth grade peacemakers and can be seen actively helping second graders make friends and play joyfully on the playground. Congratulations. She's almost tall.
May I have the Sitka power address? Tyler consistently demonstrates the core principles of Halahtini, responsibility, compassion, and engagement. Over the past three and a half years at Sitka High School, Tyler has demonstrated strong academic ability in all of his classes, making the honor roll every semester. He is a friend to all and always has a smile on his face. Tyler is an active member of the Sitka High School community, participating in a variety of activities, most notably music. Tyler is a high caliber musician who can easily stand with any of Sitka High School's finest. He demonstrates a high level of musicianship and is consistently encouraging his fellow band members not to just in the way he plays, but also in the way he treats his classmates. Tyler is a great role model and Sitka High School is proud to have him as one of our students.
All right, hold close together, guys, big smile. Make sure your certificates look good, everyone's up right, big smile. So we had the opportunity to recognize and celebrate our students, but I wanted to take a moment to recognize our school board members. February is School Board Appreciation Month. So I just wanted to take this moment and just thank the school board for all the hard work, dedication, and commitment to the Sika School District staff, students, and community. Many of you don't realize, but the emails kind of, you know, before the, you know, school, after school, over the weekends, and all the work that goes into being a school board member. So I just wanted to take this moment on behalf of myself, the staff of the Sika School District. Thank you so much for your dedication, commitment to the Sika School District and, like you said, the staff and the students for everything you do. There's some goodies that students have provided for you, as well as some thank yous from Kikushihin and Berenoff and other schools. So thank you guys so much. How about a round of applause for our student board? We asked this of our students, would you please stand up and come to the front so we can get a picture? Yes, Felix, jump on in, don't be embarrassed, so.
All of my peers are here today.
I know, I know.
That was the best part of the evening, I believe. Thank you all for being here tonight. I call this meeting to order at 6:07 PM. Let me start with the class meeting.
First and gentle, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the remainder of the heavens for all.
We will not have our land acknowledged. The Sitka School Board acknowledges that our school has located on the ancestral home of the Plinket peoples who have lived and changed since time and in this world. We express our deepest respect and gratitude for indigenous neighbors, the Puket for their enduring care and protection of Plinket Ani. Don, I appreciate it. Felix Myers.
Here.
Minch Morke.
Here.
Melanie Borden.
Here.
Todd Gebler.
Here.
Tristan Gavon.
Here.
Blossom Teal Olsen. Everyone is here and the meeting is closed. Now moving on to the approval of the proposed agenda, the consent agenda.
I'd like to, I'd like to request moving the Plinket violin presentation before the persons to be heard.
Is there any disagreement from the board about my request change? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move to approve the agenda as amended and the consent agenda.
It has been moved and cited here to approve the proposed agenda and the consent agenda as amended. Is there any public comment or comment from the board? Motion on the table is to approve the proposed agenda and consent agenda as amended. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing that the motion passes. Persons to be heard.
Good evening, everybody. I want to, first of all. There we go, set it? I'd like to thank Blossom for inviting or letting us know when's a good time to give our report on what we've been doing at Watchley Middle School as it's something that hasn't been done in Sitka before. I had created a PowerPoint because I was instructed that you try to keep it just about five minutes. So I'm going to try and I suppose you can ask questions afterward because I skip around and it's not really well organized. The inspiration for this program came from the Jam Music Program in Juneau. They have been developing over there a Plinket language immersion classroom for over two years. In the middle of the pandemic, Dr. Lori Hagee in Juneau got a grant to support the research and development of a Plinket language curriculum for the violin classes at her school, Sitka Tishana Elementary School. And in the summer of 2020, fluent speakers participated on Zoom to lay the groundwork for creating new words and concepts to use in music classes. Sitka elders and speakers participated as well. And after the first successful year of teaching 150 elementary students from kindergarten through second grade, another Juneau school wanted to try it. Kuhthibuhin jumped in and that they did that this year. And now this year, they're serving over 300 elementary students to learn the Plinket language in a music class. Just a picture that shows what's happening over in Juneau. Debbie Lebeck and I are volunteering to do this program. It requires skilled teachers in two fields, both Plinket language instruction and violin performance, to create a cross-cultural instruction that uses multiple academic disciplines to create a holistic learning experience for the students. All the teachers must be invested in helping each other and participating with each other so that they, you can model a, model a, what was the first sentence? Model, oh, learning skills. Yeah, model learning techniques for the students. Just visual. We have help from Americorps too. Less than 40 fluent speakers remain today, which emphasizes the urgency to teach our language to the next generation. Knowledge of the Plinket language connects us to this place. It supports a regional identity. It's a connection to the land. It's been spoken in Southeast Alaska for thousands of years. It contains wisdom and local knowledge and it is a literal connection to our home. It's an effective way to teach students about community involvement, problem solving skills, becoming bilingual, local history, respect for local heritage cultures and concepts. It increases their interest and engagement in school and it promotes academic success. Students learn about resiliency and they experience success. Language retention, this is an example of how local and coastal wide elders come together or came together before the pandemic to work on language retention. Cyril George, who died at over 100 years of age, would always make this prayer. He would say, "My prayer is this, may the Plinket language live forever." Community support and involvement for this particular class that we're trying to get off the ground. Dr. Lance Twitchell from University of Alaska has been instrumental in giving us key phrases and sentences when we're really in a hurry. Dr. Lori Hagee has been the inspiration and the vision maker for this whole thing. She lives and works in Juneau. Michelle Kelrooney has been volunteering in our class and she helped make our vests. So we are going to have vests for, we're going to have vests for all the students when they give their performances. Erin Rothkar has been coming in when she has, so she doesn't have a commitment otherwise. Mr. Drew Larson, the band teacher at Watchley, has been supporting us in various ways. John England even made posters for us. And one parent's been coming in, Hope Merritt. Community involvement could include bringing the language into the 21st century in modern settings. So I don't know if you can play like 20 seconds of the video, maybe it hasn't downloaded in the, but these students are, are playing at the INB hall. And if it doesn't work, we'll go on. That's okay, it takes a long time to download from Dropbox, so. Why would you want to combine a second language learning with music or any other standard academic class? Well, brain science tells us that music, math, and language learning are related and each one promotes growth of skills and abilities in the other areas. It is difficult to quantify or measure, but research has shown that these subjects are related in the brain. Learning how to learn, the second language is the hardest to learn because the first language dominates. So you're always like, your first mother tongue, it's kind of like, it won't let you hear a second language. But once the brain gets used to hearing a second language, any second language in the whole wide world will do the trick. It begins to, you begin to think in that language and third, fourth, and fifth languages are so much easier, even as adults. So I just wanted to say that, that it doesn't have to be Spanish, French, Russian. Why don't we learn our second, our, the language of the land? Because this, there's no other place you can go to learn this language. You can go to Spain or Mexico, you can go to France, you can go to all the other European countries and immerse in a language. This southeast Alaska is the only place you can learn the Plinket language in the setting that it was created for. Local knowledge is embedded in the language. There's legends, life stories are shared in the language. Thousands of years of experience living on this land is embedded in languages and stories that the elders would share with their grandchildren. Plinket place names tell about science, biology, geology, and geography. You can learn about weather and migrations. All of these subjects are creating an identity that's based on where you live. Plinket place names, rich source of ancestral knowledge. Cultural tolerance. Students gain an appreciation for other languages, for other people, other world cultures. They learn to see the world around them from a different perspective. They discover other philosophies and they experience a multi-dimensional world at a young age. Self-respect. Native Alaskan students can begin to reverse the effects of colonialism forced on their ancestors. There is little opportunity in the 21st century for Alaskan native descendants to learn in a traditional way. Transfer of knowledge used to come from their ancestors, their grandparents, and from watching nature. Intergenerational knowledge today is almost lost. Example of traditional knowledge is paddling a canoe. And all of these words have their own special meaning that sometimes can't even be translated into Plinket the same way that it's meant in a Plinket language. You can use the language for modern skills. You can use the language to tell ancient stories and the migration histories. And you can use the language to give examples from nature. The curriculum that we're using still needs to be developed. Speaking the Plinket language in the music domain for, you know, where only music is taught, we're still working on that grantically because the kids are so quick. You can integrate violin skill instruction with Plinket. You can include the language of music and mathematics along with the Plinket language. You can learn to sing Plinket songs, which is another way of learning, multiple, multiple way of learning. And we also use sign language in our class to accelerate language learning. So there's actually like four different language skills, language learning skills that we rolled together. And developing as we go, well, we started with the immersive language that Juneau developed for their school-wide music program. We found that our students are older, they're progressing faster, and so we're trying to stay ahead of them with new language development for the middle school immersion classroom. And so we're trying to stay ahead of them with new language development for the middle school immersion classroom. Examples of some projects that we created. Mark Sixby did the poster. And we got help from John Eingman over at University of Alaska to print a big poster of it. And we put the words in there. And we have more words because my students are advancing so fast that we had to expand the number of body part words. It's the thigh, the waist, the belly button, the elbow, the chin, the chest. Also, it's teeth and eyelashes. So on the left, you'll see that we have all of the words that were evolved and developed by our elders in that summer of 2020. And they came up with, they made up words to describe the purpose or the use of the parts of the violin. And the bigger the print is, the more often we use it so that the teachers can look at that folder or that poster and focus in on the level that we're at for the classroom. Funding. Sitka Streams, under the auspices of the Greater Sitka Arts Council, has loaned us violins. That's it. We haven't got any funding. Everyone else that's helping is a volunteer or unpaid. Unless it's a teacher, I can suck in between classes to help us do something. And I've had like three or four that have given us a little bit of their expertise and support. These are somewhere where students are learning to play violin, and their parents and grandparents are so proud of them. They're doing two things that is super valuable to the native community: learning an instrument and learning their heritage language. And these are heritage students. Our goals are to support positive social development, instill a value of lifelong learning, facilitate, big one, facilitate the retention of the plinket language into the 21st century. We want to contribute positively to the community through music. And we want appreciation for and knowledge, local knowledge, of local history and culture. And here's another couple of students who are really enjoying the program. Second language acquisition is easiest at the elementary ages. Sitka school district, in my opinion, needs to provide support for Baranov and Keegu Shehein teachers to integrate the language into the daily school routine, perhaps in the form of classroom commands, or in the music environment, or playground activities, or games in PE. And that's just the tip of the iceberg, what you can do to bring the language into the 21st century. Sitka school district school board needs to create a graduation requirement for one credit at least of native Alaskan language, history, art, maybe politics, food harvest and/or preservation, or some other traditional skill that a teacher is available to teach. Lifelong learning. This is something that David Katzik used to say to every class he went to in Juneau. He would say, "It is inside of us. Our language is inside of us. Our heritage is inside of us. Our knowledge is inside of us." Plinket people believe that they transferred knowledge just through osmosis, I guess. But he used to say that, and over in Juneau, they have a song. Well, we need some more violins. We need instruments, supplies, and repair services. It'd be sure nice to not be working part-time and find the different, you know, support for wages. We love community support. If anybody wants to come into our classroom and watch, the kids absolutely love it. They love to see that there's somebody else that thinks it's an important class. Also, Sitka school district participation, and last one is not on the list. We're gonna have a performance February 25th, I believe, at the INB Hall?
No, no, no. Siddlegrind.
Siddlegrind, at the Chikakuak Nukuhitie. And our students will perform, and it's in plinket. The music and words are in plinket. Gonna shichah. And the last line says the same thing.
Before you guys leave, I hear you're having a performance tonight. Congratulations.
Well, it's not actually a performance. We're gonna go watch a performance.
Go watch a performance. Thank you for that correction. And while we do know you, Robbie, within the community, and Debbie, could you please state your name for the record?
I'd be happy to. Kusheik Yulwakadwudusaw. I was given the name of Kusheik. Kekkakainakkuon. Robbie Littlefield. Shitkak Stuhkastu, Sitka School District, 1994. So I've been teaching in the school district since 1994, part-time the whole time. And because I believe so firmly that we have to have language in our children's lives, and even if we can only get it in there for one class per school, that's better than nothing because they get it every day, and they can go on to learn more than you learn how to learn. Oh, one more person.
My name is Debbie Levesque, and my plinket honorary name is Violin Lady, Gekjakshawet. I'm very proud to have that name. Gonna shich.
Gonna shich. Before you guys leave, I just want to thank you for your time and your presentation. It was delightful to see many of the elders that contributed within our community for many years, who dedicated their time to uphold the values and to pass them on to our children. It was wonderful to see those and those pictures who have walked into the force. So thank you very much for your time, for your willingness to teach. And I'm excited to see how this program grows. And as a former violin player, I am so happy that this has started. I wish you the best.
Gonna shich.
Diana. I applaud your brilliance too. Thank you for coming right up. I've always admired your energy.
To me?
Yes. And of course, you know, your dedication. So before we allow you to take before, there is some official things to be done. So moving on to item 70, persons to be heard, agenda items. Non-agenda items. Persons to be heard, non-agenda items. Persons to be heard is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board about a topic that is not on the agenda. As these are not agenda items, no board deliberation or action will occur in response. Questions for clarification may be posed by board members. The board may choose to refer items to the superintendent or designate for further action. The standard time limit for comments will be three minutes, unless otherwise stated by the board president with consent of the board. A timer is used, and a sound will indicate when time expires. All comments must be respectful, and charges or complaints against specific employees are not permitted per Alaska State statute. Members of the public are referred to Board Policies 1312, 1312.1, 1312.2, 1312.3, and associated administrative regulations, as well as a Board Law 9323A. For information about how to lodge complaints, speakers are also asked to please state their full name for the record prior to speaking. Are there any persons to be heard?
I'm Joe Montagnia.
And I'm Jeff Regal.
We both teach at Baranov Elementary School. And honestly, we didn't come prepared to talk, but I saw Robbie's presentation, and we went and observed Lori Hagee in Juneau. She's kind of a special, you know, a friend. She's a one-of-a-kind music teacher. But we were there for ukulele training and for Drums Alive training. It's a program that they do in Juneau. And thanks to the professional development money and Jill Lecron supporting us, and Jessica Christensen, Jewel Peterson, it takes a village to make these things happen. But what we saw, three minutes, Jeff, I could do this. I have to talk too. What we saw, we're in the middle of a class, and Robbie Littlefield's on the Zoom doing plinket language with the ukuleles and the violins. And we're focused on the ukulele program, which we now do at Baranov. And Jeff and I were both like blown away, and both definitely know it's an area that we need to bring to Baranov and embellish on. A million years ago, when I was teaching, my principals would always ask, you know, "What do you want to focus on? What do you want to learn?" Here I am 16 years later, and it's still the number one thing. It's the cultural engagement of myself to learn those things. Thanks to Chuck Miller over the years, has taught me and give me permission to do the Box of Daylight performance, which I've done a million times with Baranov. But this is a whole new animal for us, combining the ukuleles, Drums Alive, with plinket language. We're definitely gonna lean on Robbie Littlefield for that as well. And Lori Hagee introduced us to our artists in residence. Jeff?
Franz, I'm gonna butcher his last name, Fekel. He's gonna go by Mr. Franz, thankfully. But he actually is part of the program over in Juneau as well. And he has worked very closely with Robbie Littlefield. And I've seen, he's actually going to be bringing some of the language that he uses in his everyday lessons with him into my music program as well, into our ukulele program. So we're already going to be tying what Robbie was saying up there with our ukulele program. But the dream would be to actually have her, Robbie, be in Baranov, working with me with language in my music program as well. I had her son, Ed Littlefield, as an artist in residence as well. And when he came in, he introduced a lot of different language, a lot of different plinket language, and I use it daily now. A lot of the easy, basic ones, like stand-up, sit-down, using your it-to-what, your imagination. And the kids, they buy it, they love it, and they're in it to win it. And so more of that, yeah.
Yeah, it really engages, you know, the whole student. You know, we focus so much on academics, and this will tie in perfectly to Jill Lecron tonight because it's Baranov's night to present, right? But you know, the whole student, and they're getting the academics, and then you get a completely different child who walks into our ukulele or in our gym with the Drums Alive. And you know, you have teachers, I heard you, Bieber, I heard you, it's two of us up here, right? We can get six minutes. Great.
Remember, you can jump in on my time too.
I can jump in. No, we'll be quick. I'm just wrapping up. It's just nice to see the whole child. And you know, teachers will be like, "Oh, so Johnny had a rough day today." And we're like, "He had an awesome day with us." And it's just a different environment, different everything, and it really rounds out, I think, the students' day. You know, Jill walked in the other day, I'm having a three-point contest, and then two minutes later, we're combining boomwhackers with ukuleles and like getting bands started in kindergarten. It's just crazy. But we love it, and we definitely want to add the language component. So every time I walk in, and Mr. Fekel says, "Guide and knock," I'm like, "Is that sit-down or get-up?" I always forget. But we're working on it. We're trying. So we thank you for the opportunities and all that you guys do. And good shich.
Thanks, guys.
Were there any that we did, since you were two of you, we did separate the time? Don't please stop that. Are there any other persons to be heard on non-agenda items? Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. Mike Viera, president of Sitka Education Association this year. And I wanted to take this time on behalf of the association and our members to truly wish you a Happy School More Appreciation Month and let you know that we do truly appreciate the service that you provide to our schools and our students and our staff. We say that with sincerity, that we really do appreciate the time. And we know the time that it takes to be a good partner. The public sees you here at these meetings, and you know that there's hours that they'll need to prepare to be ready for these meetings and communicating and dealing with some things that aren't fun to deal with. So we appreciate your willingness to take that on in these areas of our community and serve our students. The other thing I want to just say is it's been really a pleasure to have an additional maintenance person on staff. Been hired now. Jared Williams has joined the team, and he is a great addition so far. There's been some things that needed to be addressed down the hard end of the plane that have been addressed with the addition of another one. Honestly, it's just fun to see Kyle have someone to hang out with during the day and commiserate with and be all that you think of. So it's really encouraging to see that position higher, and I'm glad it's happened. And I think Jared's gonna be a great fit. So we're happy to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other persons to be heard, to speak to, items that are not on the agenda? Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Annette Evans. I'm the Ventures Coordinator. We are housed in the Baranov Elementary School. I wanted to start by saying thank you for your service to our community and your support for our schools. And I second everything that Mr. Viera said. Did a nice job. So I know it's not a legal obligation for a school district to offer childcare to the community, but I just wanted to thank you not only for your service, but for offering that for our community. It's in dire need, and it's greatly appreciated by the parents that are involved with Ventures. And there's such a need for it out there. So thank you for supporting that program. And I look forward to speaking with you in the near future about retention of staff, recruiting, and a sustainable budget. We're operating in a block, and my high school students are now 18, so that is huge for our adult child ratio. And yeah, thank you very much for your service. Good shich.
Are there any other persons to be heard, to speak on items not on the agenda? Seeing then, I will move on to item 7B, persons to be heard on agenda items. Persons to be heard is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board about a topic that is on their agenda. As these are agenda items that will be discussed during the business portion of the meeting, no board deliberation or action will occur in response. The standard time limit for comments on the agenda item will be three minutes, unless otherwise stated by the board president with the consent of the board. A timer is used, and a sound will indicate when time expires. All comments must be respectful, and charges or complaints against specific employees are not permitted per Alaska State statute. Members of the public are referred to Board Policies 1312, 1312.1, 1312.2, 1312.3, and associated administrative regulations, as well as to Board Law 9323A. For information about how to lodge complaints, speakers are also asked to please state their full name for the record prior to speaking. Are there any persons to be heard on items that are on the agenda?
Good evening. Mike Viera again. Here is the president of the Sitka Education Association. Here to express concern about item 15B approval of the FY22 audit. I was concerned to see that, kind of buried on page 132 of the audit, is a pretty big change in the standard operating procedure of our district regarding the way that activity funds are distributed and controlled and executed. Forever, those activity funds, at least the high school, have remained with the high school accountant. And it's a very local approach to our building. And it's allowed our building to function as a team with our administration, our accounting team, and the coaches inevitably that need access to those people and those funds. It appears that buried within that audit report is a plan to take those out from local-controlled buildings and deposit them at the district office. And I can't express how concerned we are on behalf of my members, our coaches, who are elective teachers, our member who's the athletic director, about the loss of the local control of those that have been up. There are so many different situations that arise. One time when I was the athletic director, I got a call at 9:30 at night on Friday from Andy Lee. "Hey, we're over Flying Wrangler. We're on our way to Seattle." In the air. This was before. You could text in the air. So he just managed to get cell signal. So the time he landed in Seattle with 16 boys at 11:30 at night, I had called Terry Lurie. We had put total rooms there before. All he had to do was catch a shuttle bus. All he had to do was catch a shuttle bus, take his boys to downtown, sleep, get up the next day, go back to business. We're not gonna have access to that if these funds enter the district office. The district office closes its doors at 5 o'clock. I can't tell you the number of times that coaches walk into the office of the high school at 6:15 after practice. Hey, I need to deposit this water money that came from this fundraiser, or I need to check on this kid's buyer fee, or how can we help make sure that we can scholarship this kid? That stuff happens all the time. My other members that key, teachers that keyed are concerned about the public access to the building and the fact that you can walk into that end of the building and it's wide open to their building. After going through illustrating, that was the number one concern for that building, public access. We have 10 to 25 people that walk into the high school office to deal with activities and accounts and paying bills every day. And that's just gonna increase the number of people that come in and publicly access that end of key. So we have a lot of concerns on this. I think there's other ways to solve the issue that came up in the audit. We could get our staff to make on-time reports. We need to work together as a team. It's concerning that there wasn't a public process in this decision and that stakeholders didn't have a voice in how this ever here is to have been decided. So we hope that it's not final and we hope that we get to have a discussion of all those that will be affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other persons to be heard to speak to items that are on the agenda? Welcome.
Hi, I'm the Athletic Coordinator up at the high school and I have some concerns. Have you guys all read through that audit budget that came back? Did everybody read through that and check it out? We all got it Monday. Not a word told to us, said to us about it. We read through it and now I believe you guys are gonna take action on it tonight. And I think it's already in progress, which is fine, but I have some big concerns about the communication and how it's going about. I have not been talked to once. I had a conversation around the year that I started and it was brought to my attention about something, but I have not been communicated to once. I would ask you guys strongly to have the school board, business people, or whoever, you guys can come talk to me. My door is always open. Come talk to me and talk to me about what goes on with my job. Like Mr. Viera said, things happen all the time. I need access to stuff immediately and with stuff that's proposed, that's not gonna happen. And my feeling is Sika High Athletics and activities are gonna be held captive if it's changed dramatically. I have no idea what they're planning to do. I would like them to come talk to me. I'd like them to come talk to Sandra, our principal, and go over what their plan is. We have no idea what their plan is. So thank you guys very much for listening. Um, and like everybody else, we're here to do what's best for the kids. Our kids are doing great in activities. DDF's gonna go one state again and, uh, basketball programs are doing great, wrestling did great. But we need to, we need to communicate and I think that's a huge breakdown, because I'm not involved and I'm the one doing this. Sandra's not involved. We're the ones in charge up there. So if you have any sayable, come visit me and we can talk about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other persons to be, uh, heard that are, uh, concerned items on the agenda?
Good evening. My name's Howard Wayne and I'm a teacher at the Sika High School and I coach the Mont Trial team. And this is just brought to my attention, just listening to the discussion about local control and, uh, or control of the building on, on some of these budget items. Uh, we don't have to go back, you know, years to talk about these instances that come up where we need immediate support. Last year, by Mont Trial team, we learned, uh, at the state tournament, um, it was like 7 o'clock, we got a notice that our flights were all canceled coming home on Sunday morning. And, uh, I was on the phone with Rich and, uh, my principal and, uh, Sandra and others, you know, booking tickets. So we flew the kids the next day down to Seattle. There was a strike going on with the pilots and everything with Alaska Airlines. Uh, Felix could tell you the story, it was unbelievable. But, you know, without their support, they were working and Rich was on the phone when we were trying to track down parents and things like that at 12:30 at night, um, on Saturday night. And we worked all day, uh, the next day booking all these things. And so, uh, you know, that's the kind of thing we just couldn't do, calling the district office, uh, on the weekend. Uh, we were able to fly down to Seattle, uh, you know, get meals and everything else and be able to come back up. So it's just really important, I think, can't stress that enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other persons to be heard to speak to items that are on the agenda?
Hi, my name's Annette Evans. I'm the Ventures Coordinator and, um, I'm really concerned just hearing from, uh, those who just spoke before me on the audit. I have not read the audit myself, um, but I have reached out to Frank and Leslie within the last week, just discussing budget and whatnot. And I am concerned that there might be something, some discussions, um, or actions being discussed about my program, um, or program that I'm not aware of. So I'm, I'm just speaking now to express concern that if there is some discussions about, um, the program, I would like to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other persons to be heard to speak to items that are on the agenda? Seeing none, I will move on to item 8, special records, government to government. Are there any, uh, government to government, uh, reports? I see Sarah in the back saying no. A wonderful hall would be wonderful and welcome. All right. Are there any, uh, other government to government reports to be made? Seeing none, moving forward. Moving on to item 9, school highlights. Some of my most favorite moments. Bearinoff Elementary School. Ms. Lecron?
So I want to start by thanking you guys, um, because I know you're guys, everyone's job is really hard and all this is for you, too. Yeah. And it's a volunteer position. You're welcome and people probably don't realize that. So thank you. Linda Johnson made these. She used to make these for the budget. So you guys follow us. They're chocolate peanut butter. Enjoy.
I love your earrings, Michael.
Oh, thank you. Okay. So these pictures are gonna be less exciting than you're probably used to. I'm gonna be highlighting really academic stuff that we do at Bearinoff, um, because believe it or not, we really do focus a lot on academics. And at Bearinoff, we work on finding a balance between, um, academics and what I call faces, which are positive, uh, positive childhood experiences. So going to the next one. So if you look, like all of our kids are working hard. But at Bearinoff, we have to work on providing rich exposure to literature, to books, to music. Like we talked about earlier, our kids, for the first time, can actually read music. Four or five years ago, I think it was, I went over and saw, um, Dr. Higgy's violin program and was so inspired that I came back and I said, we have to figure out how to get this program in, at Bearinoff. And so we wrote a grant and got not violins, but ukuleles and we started, well, actually we started with drums alive, then we got, uh, ukuleles and it's just grown every year. And the partnership between, um, Mr. Joe and Jeff Hull, our music and PE teacher, has been amazing because they partner and work with our kids on these really positive childhood experiences, which really helps all of our kids get the same level playing field so that they are able to take on the harder academics that they need to just do well in school, because this is where it all starts. Okay, next. Here they are again. So you look and here's during snack time, looks pretty innocent, right? They're getting read to because we know kids need exposure to great literature. And we don't know if every kid in their life is being exposed to these things. So at Bearinoff, we're reading to them, we're letting them have all these experiences. So, you know, I know budget season is coming up and so I thought I would just talk a little bit about our budget and why it's so important when we're talking about low PTRs at Bearinoff. The reason is because every one of our children in Sika, they deserve the right to choose what they want to do when they grow up. And that choice starts at Bearinoff. It starts by having all the foundational skills they need, whether it's in academics or those life skills. And we work on those every day. We work on teaching them, whether it's they need help with buttoning their coats or, you know, tying shoes, making friends, learning how to problem solve. We work on all of that along with making sure those kids can read and write and do math at the grade level requirement. So it's very, very important that Bearinoff Elementary has low PTRs. When you have 15 kids in a classroom, you're able to do all of those things pretty well. More importantly, you can really see when those students need more help. Not only can you see it, you can offer them more. You can fine tune what those kids need. Okay, next one. Well, the picture didn't show a lot, but so there's, well, there's a nice little sample of writing, there's supposed to be a picture in there. So, you know, some of the things that, you know, we have coming up at Bearinoff that I think are really exciting to help bring our families back in because, um, during COVID, our families weren't allowed in. And when we looked at our connectiveness survey, it said families miss being a part of our community. We have our Valentine Teddy Bear picnic, which is gonna be wonderful. Families get to come in and have an indoor picnic with, um, their, their students and a stuffed animal. Oh, look, there, there they are, reading music, playing ukuleles, it's crazy. We'll talk about that in a minute. And then we also have our Artist in Residence Program, which I'm gonna ask Jeff to come up and speak to. Again.
Hi, Jeff Hull again. Um, so just to do a little more in depth about what Franz is going to be doing when he comes, uh, he's really gonna help not only build up the Klingon language, um, in the ukulele room, um, and in the music room, but he's also going to be, um, helping us get to a point where we can actually, where the first graders can have a performance after two weeks, um, to play an actual song for, oh, we're gonna invite all the families in, um, on the last Friday that he's here. And the first graders are gonna have a little ukulele performance, because we have enough ukuleles to cover every single first grader, which is amazingly awesome. And then we're also, for the kindergartners, we're going to be inviting families to come in during the, their students' music time, so they can actually see the day in life of, uh, what has been happening in this ukulele program.
Good. Thank you. So, um, today we had the jazz band come in and play for about a half an hour with our students. And at the end, Mr. Hull and, um, Mr. Joe brought in those cards and they held them up to see if the kids could read them and then asked the band to, like, play the notes. Granted, I don't know how to read music. Our kids knew what they were doing and could do it. And I was sitting there like, oh, wow, for the first time in years, our kids know how to read music and know what's going on. And it was so exciting because you heard all the research that Robbie Littlefield was talking about. It's working. Our kids are doing all this great stuff. Okay, next one. Oh, yep. Believe it or not, these are all standards, too, that our kids have to meet. Wonderful stuff happening here. Okay. Oh, problem solving in action. So as we're like talking about, you know, things that are important at Bearinoff, these are major life skills we're working on, the academics our kids have to reach at the end of the year, by the end of first grade. It is so important that our PTRs are low. We need to make sure our kids have, you know, are able to choose what their life looks like. And it starts with a really solid foundation by giving them all the tools they need. And it starts at Bearinoff. So I really appreciate your guys' support. I didn't need to be a budget person, but I had to kind of go there today. And I just want to say one more thing, because I know there's one more thing that you're gonna show. We got two amazing grants to help us finish our, and front entrance restoration project. We got one from Sika Tribe of Alaska and one from the Crossit Foundation. So we're gonna be finishing that up hopefully starting in March, right? And then hopefully through the summer. And it's going to, I think, revitalize our building and I'm very excited about that. And this is, I think, the final thing. Do you want to talk a little bit about this?
Sure.
And Mr. Joe, do you want to talk about it at all?
You can do it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so Jeff Hull again. So we've, I, I do not know how to play the ukulele, but I am learning. And so I'm learning and teaching it at the same time, which is a great way to learn, I think. Um, and these kids, um, I gave, we've been, uh, working on-
So this program's what, three years old now?
Yeah, and I've been working on it for two, three, four.
And you start, right?
Yeah. During the COVID years.
Yeah, we started it, we wrote a grant, Mr. Joe started it, and then you took it over.
Yeah. Um, and so, uh, we've been learning about, uh, solfège, uh, solo music, playing notes. So we, um, I incorporated it with a book, because of most of the librarian, um, Brown Bear, Brown Bear. And so I turned it into a song and then we decided to play the song. And so these are all C chords. You can see, um, my friend Maisy right there perfectly holding that C chord. Um, and so, uh, hit play and you'll hear Brown Bear, Brown Bear, played with the ukuleles. This is their first time ever doing it. It was beautiful. Well, second time, but. Oh, it's so beautiful, guys.
Come on.
Just sing it, Jeff, sing it. Go for it.
Hold on, he'll get it up.
Yeah. Super proud of these kids, they're working really hard and, uh, it, it's a lot easier when you have that lower or smaller class size. Um, I, I tried to do this with 28 kids the day before, um, because I doubled up and it was impossible. And this size was perfect and we actually, uh, got a lot more out of it. And so when you're able to have that, that smaller size, you can, you can actually help individual kids out, uh, while they're learning. So, yeah.
And I think why they were rushing, rushing up here to be heard was so that Robbie could hear-
Yeah.
-how excited, excited they were to share this project and what they had seen when they were over there. So-
Yeah.
Do you guys have any questions? No. What?
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Myers?
Yes, um, I, I was wondering, so obviously the, the PTR ratio is very important. So I was just wondering what- So I was just wondering what, what is sort of right now probably the largest challenge you're having to deal with when it comes to, you know, just that day to day educating? And how are you and the rest of the people working there overcoming that?
That's a fully loaded question. So I think, well, students are coming in less and less prepared and we're not sure if it's because of COVID that they've had less exposure, exposure, less socialization. We're not really sure. If you saw up there, one of the things we're dealing with is toileting, which in the past, you know, kindergartners always have like potty accidents, right? They kind of pee their pants once in a while. We always deal with that. Well, we're having really big issues, you know, that are beyond that, which we've never had to deal with. And socialization, like in the past, you were, you know, helping kids make friends and, and solve problems. Now we're really stepping back into how like two and a half, three, three and a half year olds are socializing. And not with all kids, but you know, a chunk of kids. So you're adding that on to kids that are really five years old, ready to just have regular social, socialization. And you're trying to teach those two different types of kids all the same academics. And so it's very hard. We do our best and when we have smaller class sizes, you have the ability to break them into smaller groups. And again, at the same time, we have such young kids, you want to make sure that you are always being kind to their hearts and souls. So it's a very tough job. So that's an easy answer. And any other questions?
It's not quite a question, but I do want to thank you for your presentation tonight. I know historically during their schools give presentations, it's usually the highlights of all good. And while your presentation and your report highlight many of the exciting and instrumental and important programs that will positively affect our students within the district for their entire life. It is, I appreciate the informative information that you've given about your needs. And I, I strongly suggest that you continue. And every report should highlight those continued needs because we need to hear that. That is my opinion. The board needs to hear what our schools need to best support growth within our children, strength within our educators, and overall success within our city. And I thank you for that and thank you very much for your lovely gift. And I'm excited for things to come. And thank you, Mr. Hull and Mr. Joe. Every time my children see you guys, and I'm sure they're not the only one, their faces light up. So thank you again for the information that you've given tonight. Board, do you have anything else to say or ask?
No. Thank, no, thank you.
They have to be here an hour.
It was nice, it was nice to wait a couple minutes till you're done.
It's not too many.
I'm not really bored in my career.
We have tickets to the show tonight too. We're staying at seven o'clock.
I'm expecting to report on this seven o'clock show, by the way. Next presentation, the school highlights from Pacific High School.
First, I just want to express gratitude to all of you. Thank you. Not close enough? Feel better? For all of your time and service on the school board. Thank you for being here. I'm doing the work that you do because I, I personally am not envious of the work you have to do and so I appreciate you all doing it. I do not have slides for you all, so I want to apologize for that at the outset. It's been busy at Pacific High. We've had a lot of people out, I mean, a lot of staff out on Sitka and a lot of students out. And so I will be as animated as I can be to try and distract your attention, well, at least give you some highlights from what we've been doing over the last couple months. So we currently have 43 students enrolled. We have had one that has finished up for credit requirements and will be applying for, requesting early graduation. Mr. Hauser, we see in that come across his desk in a few weeks. I wanted to highlight that we have, we currently have four students who are taking dual enrollment classes at Sitka High School, who are enrolled at Pacific High School. And then we have five students who are in dual enrollment classes at UAS currently. Those, those are high numbers for us. That's a, and so that's good. We're getting more and more students. Oftentimes, you know, that trip across the bridge can be very, very far for a lot of our students. And so we, we have students who, who are taking part in art classes with Mark Sixty and I think that has really been a bridge over the bridge for our students because they really enjoy Mark's classes as well as just learning form line design. They've been learning wood carving with him and he does allow them the freedom to not stick with necessarily what he wants them to learn, but what do you want to learn? And he shares that information with them. So, so it's nice to see we have more and more students heading over to UAS to take dual enrollment classes. We had our holiday party in December. This is something that we do with our students every year before the holiday vacation. It's a, it's a whole school event. We have three different crews, which are our homerooms for those of you who are familiar. We have, we have a group of students who volunteer to help put the holiday meal together. We have students who volunteer to figure out what activities will be taking place. We have a group of students that volunteer for the cleanup afterwards. And then we set up all of our tables at Pacific High School in a big, long, formal-ish eating style and everybody sits elbow to elbow and, you know, passes food around. And, you know, it's nice that we haven't been able to do that since COVID. So it was nice to have everybody together, sharing in a meal together. And then there's, Santa Claus came to town. We have a teacher who I'll just say has an in with Santa. So Santa came to school and gave out some gifts to the students as well. In January, we started out the new year with, we call it J Session, happens in January. But it's also a reorientation. So we do orientation at the beginning of the school year that's focused on community building, starting to introduce the socially emotional skills that we want to focus on in that first semester. And then students participate in enrichment classes in the afternoon, opportunities that they, you know, may not have access to or unique opportunities that they may not have known existed or that they like. And so in Jan, in January, we do a reorientation because we tend to get new students at the beginning of the year in the new semester. And so we had six days of reorientation. In the morning, we did focus on community building activities, some self-reflection activities with students. And then in the afternoon, we offered enrichment classes for students that included guitar. Matt, our social studies teacher, and Ryan, our English teacher, they both are guitar players. We had a guest teacher show up. Mr. Hauser came in and showed the kids a few things. And we had a picture framing class. Our Americor, Ellie Veer, is a pretty talented woodworker and she has been making picture frames for years. And so she's brought that skill to students and so students were able to design what they wanted their picture frame to look like. She was able to get a piece of glass donated that then she, you know, did the etching and the breaking up and all of the kids were able to create their own picture frame in that class. That was fun. And then our highlight of J Session was we had our Artist in Residence for Pacific High School in partnership with the Fine Arts Camp. And our Artist in Residence was Elizabeth Jean Yelts. She is, resides in LA and she is a digital artist and a printmaker. Her master's work was in lithography. And in six days, she worked with a group of students who signed up for her class. She taught them how to create digital art in a program they had never used before. She taught them how to then print out their artwork on a piece of vinyl using the cricket. And then they were screen printing shirts by the last day. And so the students, each crew worked together to choose the design for their T-shirts that represented, that best represented their crew family. And then all of the students in the school got a screen printed shirt that had student made artwork on it. And so it was a huge undertaking in six days and Elizabeth is just amazing and we would love to have her back. The work that, she's an amazing teacher. In fact, I asked her, have you had teacher training or teaching experience? And she just, she's just very natural at teaching her craft and loves it. And so we had a great time with her in the building. And a huge thanks to Jessica Christensen. She was there every single day. She was there late cleaning up paint or cleaning up supplies, but, you know, everything and anything we needed to make that happen, Jessica made sure we had that. And so I really appreciate her efforts as well. Roger Schmidt came by and looked at what the students were doing as well. And so I just appreciate that partnership with Sitka Fine Arts Camp. Let's see, a little bit of a garden update. I feel like I jinx myself every time I do this, but, but we're going to do it anyway. So we are, we are waiting on some cooperative weather to pour concrete. We did not get the concrete poured in the fall, I guess, before the weather was freezing and so now it's freezing and then not freezing. Apparently it's not ideal weather to pour concrete in. We just need, you know, a trough of concrete before we could put the plastic up on the sides. And so we, it's looking good, but I'm just, you know, we're hopeful to have that in so we can get the sides up before spring. Our Farm to School Grant, which funds our school gardener, has been extended. We received an extension on that grant. It should have ended at the end of December, but we had some funds that weren't expended. And so we requested an extension on that grant, which is going to basically allow us to keep our school gardener on, on staff with Sitka Conservation Society through the end of the school year, which is actually really fantastic because now she's going to be on, for another growing season with our students. So she'll be working with students to start plants and get plants ready for our plant sale in the spring. Over the holidays, we also received word that we, two other grants that we applied for were funded. Both of these grants were applied for through Sitka Conservation Society. They've been a fantastic partner in this project and they actually have access to some grants that we wouldn't have access to. Chandler O'Connell has been, been working so closely with also Sarah Ferenczy and our school gardener Andrea Fraga. And I think, I think that they've put out four or five grant requests, two of which we have gotten, received. One is the Crossit Grant. We received just about $20,000, $19,349 to support the construction of the interior of the greenhouse. So once we do get the sides up, we have the funding in place to purchase the lumber. In fact, we already have that. That was just delivered to the school. It was locally milled by a local, I don't think it's mill, right? But someone who mails lumber. And it was just delivered to the school just yesterday. And so we have the wood now that we would use to construct the beds on the inside of the greenhouse. It's also, the funding will also support the pavers, the gravel. And then we received another grant through the State of Alaska Department of Natural Resources. It's a micro grant for food security and that was $10,000 and that's for the interior of the greenhouse also and it's for the soil, it's for the amendments. So we have one grant to build the structures inside the structure and then we have another grant to, to fill those beds with dirt so we can start planting in them. So that's nice to have that funding in the hopper. So when we do get those sides up, boy, we're just ready to start filling that greenhouse up. Again, huge thanks to Andrew Toames and Chandler O'Connell with Sitka Conservation Society. They've just been really dedicated to helping us move this project forward and students out in the garden. Semester two has started and I just want to mention our partnerships for Friday enrichment classes. We have new Friday classes that students can take, some of the same partners, but they're teaching different classes. Matt is teaching guitar. It's becoming hugely popular at Pacific High School. We have another large class on Fridays of students who are taking guitar. We have a, a new class with Sitka, with the Science Center called Earth Guardians that will be focusing on ecology and stewardship of the natural environment. Youth Advocates of Sitka is teaching a class called Got Resilience, helping students learn about and build their resilience skills. We're happy to welcome Phil Burdick back into the school. He's teaching a Restorative Practices class called Circles exclamation point. Students are, are excited. I mean, some of the, we have students sign up for classes and give us a reason. Why do you want to take this class? I mean, there were so many, because it's Phil. And so it's kind of nice to have him back and supporting the Restorative Practices program that we use at Sitka. We also have our continued partnership with Sitka Native Education Program and the Beating Class that happens in the afternoon. That's also a very large class and I'm really grateful that we have the Seek Building to spill into because it allows for, you know, a large number of students to take that class. And then an Americor with STA, Erin Broderick, she's teaching a class on zines, teaching kids about making those. I need to spend more time in that class and get a little bit hipper on what they're going to be doing in there. And then Southeast Alaska Independent Living is teaching another job running this class. They do that every year. They, they take students out into the community to learn about different jobs. They toured C-Mart last week and learned things they didn't even know were to be learned about, you know, dairy departments and produce departments and just different aspects of the grocery business as well as what age you need to be to work in different departments and how you might be a more successful applicant and those types of things. So it was just exciting to see semester two opening up. We've got new classes and new excitement, new students. And hopefully some walls on the greenhouse before I come back. Questions or wonderings?
Questions? Board?
People, human resources. I'm anticipating your question, but go ahead.
Yes, it's the, it's going to be the same question I ask every time. What is the large challenge that you are facing right now and how are you addressing
I, I think it's human resource within our building. You know, I've, I've come up here and said many times, our, our roster is growing. I mean, we have, we've had over 45 students for a number of years now, which, which was not the case, you know, more than five years ago. So as well as our programs are expanding, but, but, but with close to the same staffing. So we've got this large garden program now that we do have a school gardener, but we've got to find the funding through grants to keep her on. I mean, if we don't get another, another grant for her, then we have to figure out how to keep this garden program growing with the staff that we currently have. We, you know, have noticed that, you know, mental health needs and socially emotional support needs are much higher now than they were prior to COVID. And so the need for- And so the need for, I would say, positive adult mentors is critical. And, you know, we have just a limited number of staff in our building because we're a small building and we have, you know, a lower number of students, mostly because that's all we can fit into our building. I mean, I'm really grateful to, you know, again, the district for, you know, letting us expand into a classroom into the SEEK building because it's the one thing that, that, you know, we can, we can free up some space in the classrooms in the main Pacific High Building. So we're, we're, we have more students than ever. Our programs continue to grow and expand. And we're doing that with virtually the same staffing that we all always have. I said it to school board members that were at the budget meeting for Pacific High School last night. Our school's social worker is funded by COVID money. It's not a permanent position that is funded in the general fund. And that's a critical resource for our school. So, um, thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice of you to ask.
Any other questions? On the board?
Another question, but, can you hear me? Not a question, but I was, went on a little tour with you around there, which is great. And I see why you are growing and it was pretty fun.
Yeah.
Wonderful stuff.
Wow. I do have to say, for the public record, my son at Pacific High School, in congestion here with board, he is playing guitar more and more every evening, offering the kids to hear more and more John Cash in the upstairs room. We still have the hardy little kale plant that we cannot bring ourselves to eat. And my son has done his, we sat down and he did his first taxes due to the sale program. So the positivity that is coming out of this, I cannot commend Pacific High School enough for the endeavors that you continue to put your hard work into. And you know what? I, I am hopeful for that garden because that little kale plant is lonely and I do not have a green thumb. So thank you very much for your report. And congratulations on the grants.
Grants.
Moving on to reports and presentations. Ten reports and presentations, ten A, Stacy Golden. Welcome. Stacy Golden is presenting new elementary science curriculum presentation.
So I'm actually, I was asked to present kind of the process and kind of where we are in the process. So I'm not actually sharing the curriculum with you this evening. So, perfect. I just wanted to make sure. So in spring of last year, actually in January, we started a K-12 science curriculum committee. We had two members from Bearinoff, three from Keet, and then one from each of the secondary schools. We started off by just talking about historical context, how we had moved from the Alaska Benchmark Standards and had, the district had accepted the new science standards for Alaska. And so now looking at how we were gonna move forward with implementing those new standards into the school district. Then each school kind of shared where they were on current level of science education and we looked at the most recent scope and sequence, just to kind of see what, what the most updated paperwork said and what we were actually doing in the schools and kind of where we were with that process. Throughout the spring, we came up with some goals that we knew, kind of to start with, we wanted to focus a bit on elementary science curriculum and elementary science support. We were looking into the specialist model that existed at Keet and how to continue with that and grow that program out into the other classrooms. And at that point, we're considering adding one to, asking about adding one to Bearinoff. And then we talked about a comprehensive plan with new standards and the new curriculum and how we coordinate with all of our local partners and our place-based education and how that would fit in with the state standards. And then our other goal was to be able to do an elementary survey. And so we did that last spring. And the big, kind of top four topics that came from surveying the elementary were that they needed time, time to learn whatever new curriculum there would be, time to teach it in the classrooms, because that was one of the biggest challenges that the elementary teachers were facing, and how they were gonna come up with time to actually prep supplies and set up science-type stuff. Also, a curriculum, they wanted an actual curriculum that was easy to use, didn't take a lot of prep work, took very basic materials and something that was gonna be sustainable over the course of years in terms of cost and ability to keep it in the district. The third thing was money for supplies and to be able to get a lot of those materials into the classroom and build up what they had. And then some professional development. Some teachers wanted professional development just in terms of teaching science in general. And then everybody kind of wanted it, once a curriculum was chosen, to help learn how to implement that curriculum. So that was kind of what we focused on last spring. Then starting in this fall, we went ahead and expanded the committee to include one elementary teacher for every grade level K-5. And then still just a building representative for the secondary schools, since that's only two to three teachers per building. We talked about discussing curriculum options that had been previously used, that teachers had experience with, and how curriculums connect with some of the other programs in the district. For instance, looking at how they would connect with the Nat Geo program or the Envision's math program, Nuzella, and also talk to them about Mystery Science, which a lot of teachers were already using. Then this fall, there was also some time at the elementary schools where they started to work on looking at what they were currently teaching and where the new state and district adopted science standards are and kind of what they were already teaching. Then in January, we spent a couple hours on a Saturday and started to look at curriculums. And we looked kind of from one extreme to the other, kind of the very traditional textbooks. We looked at like workbooks where kids would get a workbook that they would work on each year and those would be consumables. We looked at kits, which is a very common way of doing elementary science. And then we looked at like, you know, the option of completely creating our own science curriculum pieces and then online pieces. And so the, we spent several hours that morning just kind of going through, looking at things, talking about cost, sustainability and such. And really, the team narrowed it down to liking the idea of an online type subscription that we can pay for, that teachers can pick and choose, that's fully developed and has all of the materials there, the labs, the teaching resources, assessments, and all of those things that are available online. And didn't want to invest money into books and consumable things that have to be rebought every year, that type of stuff. So they narrowed it down to two programs. And Bearinoff and Kiko Shaheen teachers are both kind of highlighting both of those programs right now through January and February. And so then at the end of this month, we will plan to have a parent meeting for elementary parents to kind of look at those two curriculums. And then plan to come back to the March Board meeting for the two elementary programs to be shown to you guys, so you can see what those would look like and how they compare with one another. And then hear the feedback from the elementary schools and what the schools would like. Each grade level will say we would prefer this one or we would prefer this one and why. So we'll kind of talk through that piece. As far as secondary, right now, it looks like there might be a forensics book or of some sort, or a forensic curriculum that we may bring into the committee to ask for. But otherwise, Sika High creates our own kind of stuff, so we're not looking at buying books and things that way. So secondary is still in the works, but it won't be ready for March meeting. And then hopefully, if everything moves well, we would be able to adopt an elementary curriculum at our April 5th school board meeting. And then that would allow us to possibly get the purchasing done. Mr. Hauser has set aside the April 21st in-service for elementary teachers to work that day to start looking at new curriculum and lay out their plan and kind of start to look at that scope and sequence and materials listing and those types of things. And then the idea for a final scope and sequence document would really come through next year. That's been kind of a goal of a lot of teachers and whatnot, is to work more on curriculum. So the idea that there might be more curriculum days built into the professional development calendar next year, which would allow the science department, as well as other departments, to kind of work on those scope and sequence documents. They take a lot of time and kind of working through the year. So that's kind of what we've done and kind of where we're at. So I'm not sure if there's anything you need to clarify or if you guys have any questions or...
I would just, nothing to clarify. Thank you very much for that update, for presenting and for your patience as we were, you know, kind of going through. I also just wanted to take a moment to thank her for all the work that she's done leading the science curriculum committee process. And so it's been really great to have conversations. I couldn't imagine anybody more suited and able to tackle science curriculum than Stacy is. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Myers?
Yeah, so I'd like to start by talking about some of what Student Council's been doing recently. I think a new initiative that we started today and that we've been working on for a while, that's kind of come to action today is our new commit to graduate program. And then today, we started our mentorship idea for the rest of this process. And so what Student Council's been working on is sort of this idea of making a pledge where all the students of the school are going to sign a commit to graduate form and we're all gonna sign our banners for our class. And that's gonna be hung up in the gym under our, under the banners that are seniors, juniors, sophomores and freshmen. And the goal behind this is, you know, to get more kids to see the value of high school and finishing high school and getting across that finish line. And so part of the initiative that we're doing to get to make sure that's as successful as possible is that we're starting a advisory mentorship program where a senior advisor group is gonna be paired with a sophomore advisor group and junior groups, junior advisor groups are gonna be paired up with freshmen. And what that's hopefully going to foster is sort of a mentorship relationship where the upperclassmen can sort of coach these underclassmen through this process of, you know, yeah, there's a few more years left here and how do you make the most of that? It's worth it. How do we get through this and how can you get to that graduation point? And so our goal right now is sort of galvanizing all of the upperclassmen to this idea of, I can be a leader in my community in this area and I can guide, you know, the, the underclassmen to get to this goal, which is an essential one, you know, for our community and for their futures. And so that's been a big, big point that we've been pushing and we're very excited. Next week, Wednesday, is gonna be our first advisor, advisor group meeting where our, the upperclassmen and the underclassmen are gonna be meeting. And then we're gonna be talking about this commit to graduate pledge that will be held at a Friday assembly and it's gonna be a lot of fun. Very excited about that. So yeah, that's probably the biggest thing going on right now. I'd say that's important to education, what our goal is. Talking about some other things today, the Senate released its new amendment to the BSA, increasing it by $1,000, which is significant and that's very exciting. I'll be going to the Legislative Line in a few days to meet with some of these legislators and continue to advocate for that and talk about why it's essential to have this increase, not have it whittled down by amendments, you know, over time as it happens and make sure that it stays a significant amount or, you know, even goes up and make sure we inflation-proof that. It's gonna be essential. So I think that's a pretty exciting development just for education in general, is getting that increase and that's pretty significant, not to the, not to inflation rates of what it was when it was increased in 2017. They're still under what would be needed to reach it to those same levels, but, you know, with circumstance, it's still better than we thought was gonna happen at this early, very early stage. I did want to touch on what Mr. Viera and some of the other teachers brought up with the new audit and moving these activities, centralizing that fund to the, centralizing that fund to the district office. And as, speaking as a student who does a lot of activities, it, things go wrong, you know. We live in Alaska, we have some very extreme weather conditions and sometimes we have to change flights, do these different things. And if we can't access that help or, A, that needs to be something that is taken into account as students traveling, we have to be able to have a, someone we can get to and people who can work on getting us home or getting us out to where we need to go. And that needs to be a priority. If, if this change has to happen, and I'm not sure it does, we're looking at significance versus the actual reaction. We have to make sure that when this does happen, there is a constant line of support for student activities if it's something that has to go. So because of that, I'd just say, speaking on behalf of students and student activities, that, that has to be a priority, is making sure that we still have access to the ability to communicate and make sure we can get home. And make sure that we can still communicate with, you know, the administration and people who run these activities and support us. Yeah, that, that concludes my report.
Uh, Mrs. Boyd?
You were hiding behind Mr. Moore. I'm here. Good evening. I just want to take this time to thank all of the students and the staff for the posters and the cards and the wonderful gifts. So thank you. That's very nice. And I guess just to report, I had the opportunity to attend the presentation at Pacific High School of Lauren Peters, who talked about her experience in bringing her loved ones' remains home from the Indian Carlisle boarding school. And then also I went to the pre-presentation put on by a couple of teachers the day before. And they wanted the kids to be prepared before Lauren's presentation. So they did a real brief overview of the history of boarding schools, the overview of the Anunga people, and then Lauren's background and the process she went through, so that they were prepared before her presentation the next day. So it was awesome to see that kind of learning and teaching going on at Pacific High School. So thank you.
Mr. Moore?
I need to present, but I do think the Student Council's efforts, those are gonna have big rewards. That's pretty awesome.
You always keep your reports short. How, how is the coaching line?
It's incredibly busy. This is the, this month was the least amount of time I've had available for school board. It's, it's very busy.
And for the public record, what, what do you coach? This is part of the community and I think this is important.
Uh, well, I have third and fourth grade team and a fifth and sixth grade team. And I often coach seventh graders. I don't usually do the kindergarten through second. I gotta draw a line somewhere. But I do go in and make sure they're all going smoothly as much as possible.
Basketball curve?
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for your time and dedication to our children and direct out with their sports. Sports is very important to growth. Mr. Pavan?
So I think first, I just wanted to start off with a quick stat-
Mr. Moore?
I don't need to present, but I do think the student council's efforts, those are going to have big rewards. That's pretty awesome.
You always keep your reports short. How, how is the coaching line?
It's incredibly busy. This is the, this month was the least amount of time I've had available for schoolwork. It's, it's very busy.
And for the public record, what, what do you coach? This is part of the community. I think this is important.
Well, I have third and fourth grade team and a fifth and sixth grade team. And I often coach seventh graders. I don't usually do the kindergarten through second. I got a draw line somewhere. But I do go in and make sure they're all going smoothly as much as possible.
Basketball career?
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for your time and dedication to our children indirect with their sports. Sports is very important to growth. Mr. Gavon?
So I think first, I just wanted to start off with a quick staff recognition. I kind of heard about this through the grapevine and I thought it was important to recognize the work of, of the staff member. We have a lot of staff who do great work. And I think we've spent an entire meeting or every single meeting recognizing that good work if we, if we recognize every individual. But the person I just wanted to, to recognize tonight is Carrie Segal, who's the district's family engagement and early childhood coordinator. Carrie, you know, has been with the district for, for years, did a lot of amazing work as the Blatchley Middle School librarian, but has transitioned into this new role. And I had the opportunity to work with her previously. And she just goes above and beyond in terms of engaging, you know, or finding ways to engage parents and families and community with the schools and also connecting parents and families and students with resources. I'll give a little plug to the siccakids.com website that she helped establish. You can go on there and find out a lot of information about resources available in our community. But among all this great work she does, the one thing I wanted to mention, she'd been asked by the Association of Alaska School Board, Boards to present to other districts on how to engage and how to get parents and families to respond to the school climate and connectedness survey. Carrie has worked diligently on that. And if you look at our response rate for the parent survey, the parent and family survey, survey on the school and climate and connectedness survey, it is just, you know, leaps above what, what other districts are seeing. And so Carrie has, has been giving presentations and is going to do some additional trainings for, for other districts on how they can improve their, their response rates. And so I just thought that was worth recognizing and mentioning. And, you know, among all the work, the great work that our staff does, you know, not only having an impact in our community, but on, on kids and families throughout the state. So wanted to again, recognize Carrie Segal for her great work there. The other thing, I'll just, I'll just touch on this briefly. I didn't do the, the full school board, full written report this month, but I did attach a couple of documents. One of the things I've been thinking about a lot lately and the board has been discussing and thinking about is just how we work, work together as a board. A little background for the, for the community who probably doesn't follow and pay as much attention to the Alaska Open Meetings Act. But as a board, we can only discuss things as a full board, take action or give direction as a full board through a publicly noticed meeting. So these meetings, special meetings, you know, work sessions where we can discuss issues, you know. And so, so there's not a whole lot of time for us, us to do that. We're, under the Open Meetings Act, we can talk to up to one other school board member about a given issue, you know, so that all of, all of our deliberations are happening out in the public. That's how it's supposed to work. And it just makes things take a little longer. It, it requires us to be innovative and think about ways that we can work within the Open Meetings Act to still get things done, to have conversations, to, to take action. And so I just wanted to throw a couple of things out here for the board consideration, really. One of the documents I attached there is, is a board work plan. And something I've been doing in my written monthly reports is, is reporting on which school board members I'm working with on a given issue, so that there's transparency there, so that the public knows that, you know, I and, and one other school board member are, are working on a given issue if they want to provide feedback on that. You know, so just, just a measure there. And something I've seen, I'm not sure that the school board has done this in the past, but I know that the Assembly has, they've, they've kept a, you know, publicly available kind of spreadsheet of all of the work that members are doing. So it gives an opportunity for the board to create consensus around what we want work on and who from the school board is working on that. So for example, at our, our annual retreat back in October, Mitch and I were kind of tasked with this, this goal of creating a mid to long-term view of the budget. You know, and so the only way we can do that is, you know, working the two of us, working with Superintendent Hauser, since it was something approved by the board, and then bringing that back to the board in a meeting or a work session. And so I think, you know, I want to put it out there for consideration of the board of, of just maintaining this, this work plan that spells out, you can see, you know, kind of the, the columns, our general work area, you know, budget or curriculum review, strategic planning committee, a short description of what that work is, which school board members are working on that given issue, up to two of us. In addition, we can have our student representatives working on those and then any staff involved, just so that, that we can share that with one another and share it with the public. And you'll see the second sheet there is just my, my tracking spreadsheet. I basically took the narrative from my report and put it in a, in a, in a spreadsheet format. So, so everybody knows kind of what I'm working on and, and who I'm working with. And then the second one, we can accomplish things through work sessions. And, and one of our, our board goals for this year was to hold more work sessions so, so we could kind of catch up on, you know, post-COVID, a lot of those things, like the curriculum review that were kind of put, put by the wayside. And so I know in the past, and it's probably been years, the school board would, would have regular work sessions every month. So there'd be the regular meeting on the first Wednesday or whichever day, and then the third week of the month, the work session focused on a given topic. And I don't know if we necessarily need to go back to that, but, but it got me thinking. And so I put together kind of a list of the, the work sessions I'd like to see throughout the year. And these tie to our main, our main charges as school board members, you know, the budget, supervising the superintendent, curriculum and instruction, those curriculum reviews, the strategic plan. So there you'll see, you know, I won't go into detail, but you see in August through July, kind of proposed schedule for some of those work sessions. So for example, in October, we could focus on the strategic plan and school data. So that going into that annual retreat in November, we're kind of setting our goals based on the strategic plan, based on student data, student needs, et cetera. Having a, you know, a curriculum review cycle work session at the beginning of the year. So we're ensuring we're tracking and sticking to our policies, et cetera. So anyways, you know, the only time we can talk about this or I can share this idea with all the board members is at a publicly noticed meeting like this one. And so I just wanted to throw that out there for board consideration and, you know, hopefully some discussion down the line here.
Thank you, Mr. Gavon. Mr. Gebler?
So I have to again remember not to follow Chris Tristan, because a lot of what he just talked about is things that I'd like to talk about as well. And just to go, just kind of go on his coattails a little bit about the joint sessions. I think it's important for joint sessions. I, I do remember last year, from my perspective, my first year on board, it was COVID. Everything focused around COVID. And I feel like I didn't get a lot of, a lot of other things done. I didn't, we, I don't remember any joint work sessions. The SDA, you know, the tribe, I don't remember any of those. I guess everything, COVID kind of took the air out of the room, that kind of, that sort of speaks. So I, I, I'm a full supporter of joint work sessions. Without communication, there, there is no relationship without communication. And these joint sessions are a great way to do that. What Tristan was saying with the Opens Meeting Act, we're, we're kind of limited. We're kind of limited to what we can talk about, to who and how far we can go with any kind of topic. Joint work sessions, it's kind of a roundtable. You can get more done that way. So definitely on board with that all around. So, thank you. Oh, I have to follow up with Mitch. I can testify. My, my son is playing basketball Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. He's very busy. So I know, I know Mitch is busy with that for definite. And with Felix, we are going to Juneau to meet with legislators, talk about a variety of things. So if you have any questions that you want to have heard, please email me or somebody on the board. Those are questions that we can bring to, to the legislators. Your voice is, it's important. You know, with more voices, the lot we can beat. So I would appreciate some input for that. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Gebler. I would like to echo what both Mr. Gavon and Mr. Gebler stated. It is highly important that we continue to work on growing the work sessions moving forward so that we can address the many different things that COVID put a halt to. So I, I agree that it is refreshing to be able to actually get down to business and to work on the district and, and continue to explore new avenues of how we can expand our services to best serve our children. Moving on to my report, I was able to meet with Mr. McCarty. Usually I meet with Principal Lovey, but she was busy as she didn't understand what the degree was. She was, you know, working with UAS, I believe, at the time. We did have a good discussion about the growth of Sicca High School. He excitedly told me about the upcoming prom. I do plan to attend. Maybe not attend in full attire, but attend just to fully come full circle and celebrate the fact that we can have prom. You know, as a board member and going through COVID, many of the natural experiences that teenagers should have were taken away sadly. And so I am, I was excited to hear about that. We, I attended the city assembly meeting and informed them of the staff hearings, budget sessions that have been taking place. We will continue those tomorrow as well. And I was able to stop by Pacific High School. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the, the presentation of the journey of, yes, Lauren Peters entering her husband home, which I found moving. So, and it was exciting to see how that is being applied to the Pacific High School students. And that, I think, is the entirety of my report. So moving forward, I am moving on to item 12, administrative reports.
Just want to go through, highlight just the budget report as we go through. Obviously, we're continuing to get our revenues coming in from the state and our local contributions. So if there are any questions on the budget report that have come through, I'm not hearing it, I'd like to kind of go and just report out on our enrollment numbers. As we talked about, we were budgeted for 1,111.1 students this year. That was our just average daily membership. Shortly after, we received 13 additional students. And as you can see, we are still at 1,123 students in the district. So we're maintaining our enrollment numbers. So we're very excited about having that stability and that increase in our student enrollment numbers. And, you know, we had conversations about during the budget process, we talked about the, what we believe is and the projection to have more stabilized enrollment and hopefully see an increase in some of that enrollment. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of those points. Moving on to my superintendent report, I just want to go through, I've got a couple of highlights I want to go and show. First, we're going to start with our Kikushin. So we have additional highlights. We've heard some amazing highlights this year. One of the great things, I was so excited to get a chance to see, that Keet got a chance to hold a family night on Thursday, January 19th. They had 179 families come to join in the evening of arts, crafts, ping pong, gym time, board games, math games, reading finds, strawberry dipping, Legos, American Sign Language, a light meal, a pancit, and spring rolls and fruit. It was all served. And just going through and seeing the smiles on everyone's faces, the parents engaged. We've heard multiple times about how COVID impacted our connections with our schools. It was just so great to see a family night. And I know these are going on around the schools, bringing families back in, bringing students back in, re-engaging them. I saw a number of school board members there too and reminded them that we did have a meeting at the Assembly later that night. But we all made it to both places and got a chance to enjoy that. But it was great to see all the families there and just having a great time, being connected to their neighborhood school was great. Here's a few more slides from the event. It really was a remarkable turnout. And I just have to say, it was great to see, going into the library, they had campfire reading with flashlights and little nooks in the library. So it was just really cool to see everyone there and just building and strengthening some of those connections, not only with the students and the families, with students and the schools and families and schools and with their teachers and with the principals. And so it was just really a great night. And I just wanted to take that moment to highlight it. Keith offered, I'm sorry, Keet offers a special shout out to Sicca High School students, Matthew Leach, Dylan Kreena, and Kai Davis for installing the new backboard padding at Kikushin. Thanks to Tim Pike and Mike Vera for organizing the help. Students from Mrs. Garnier's fifth grade class made and sent cards for Valentine's, for Veterans Day to active duty military and veterans. Members of the Sicca American Legion Post 13 and US Coast Guard presented the school medal award to their class for displaying the qualities that define character: courage, leadership, patriotism, scholarship, and service. Keet also had their school spelling bee last week with 36 participants in grades second through fifth. As we recognized them earlier today, Ruby and Quentin Richter were the first and second place winners. And also peacemakers facilitated the cooperative play during second grade recess. We also had our artist in residency, Casey Cassidy Russell, who is a faculty member of the Sicca Fine Arts Camp. She taught students theater games and brain breaks that build community perseverance and life skills. So a lot of really great things happening at Kikushin. Moving on to Blatchley Middle School, we actually have a special government to government report tonight from Treasurer Blatchley. As he reports, the best week of middle school is coming up, which is DYP, which is discover your potential. So we've got short video from Mitch from Blatchley Middle School.
Hi, I'm Glenn Spock. Thank you for coming on the school floor, for being on the school floor. I'm the treasurer for the school and I'm in eighth. Here are some of the highlights of things going on in the events. There is wrestling, there is volleyball that is starting up, Sound of the Blues that is being aired at Laila's Radio. And Valentine's Day, the profits go to funding for our arts classroom slash arts class here at Blatchley Middle School. So sort of vices have a lovely, we have had a totally fun time staring at this thing, because it helps teachers 3.0 weakness in our strength so they know where to help us for our future. Do you want a piece of this? This is we at middle school, because we need to learn things in our school. We get to do it again because signature and SDA, you should apply and may participate from your own school board. See you soon.
We got a chance, he was one of the students that tours around Blatchley Middle School. We were doing our school board and assembly tours and it was great. His tapes were fantastic. He did a great job showing us around. So I just wanted to, that was a great video. So moving on to the high school, as you heard earlier, the DDF team continues its strong performance at the regional, region five DDF tournament in Juneau. High School was region five drama champion, region five debate champion, region five forensics champion, and region five overall sweepstakes champion. There are many individual awards. In fact, there were too many awards really to list out unless we wanted to be here until probably 11 o'clock. But it just is really great to see that continued, you know, just excellence that is the drama, debate, and forensics team. You know, next up for DDF is the state In addition, boys and girls basketball play at Mount Ishkum High School on Friday night and at home versus Mount Ishkum on Saturday night. And finally, the high school hosted Lauren Peters in the library on Friday, January 27th, and had 51 students and seven teachers attend. In my last update, we talked a little about the MTSS and multi-tiered systems of support, which is a data-informed framework in which students who need additional supports are identified and provided that support with the right focus and intensity. MTSS helps us continue to make progress on our strategic planning initiatives, particularly with strategies number one and six, identifying strategies to close learning gaps and expanding opportunities and removing participation barriers and for students. SSD is part of a 15 district grant to review and align MTSS, PBIS, or Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, and RTI or Response to Intervention or Instruction, some people say it a couple of different ways, practices in the district. We do have an MTSS RTI refresh team that's comprised of teachers, principals, that is assembled just for this purpose. And we got a chance this last weekend to attend the RTI MTSS conference in Anchorage, and it was fantastic. I mean, it was just a great opportunity for the team to get together and just hear different sessions and talk to specialists in the field. One of the team members said, quote, "Every session I attended had valuable information or something that made me excited about teaching." Another team member praised the great sessions on attendance, classroom management, and MTSS for secondary schools. Team members are going to be coming together again and continue to work on the refresh and talking about the MTSS RTI model for the district, and really trying to find that common thread and kind of realigning and refreshing some of the work that we do around MTSS RTI and really focusing on our staff and student supports. And so we're really excited about that. The team is also planning on attending the reading symposium in April, and I think this is an important point with the Alaska Reads Act starting this July. It really is a perfect opportunity for our district to review current MTSS practices and how MTSS, PBIS, and RTI practices can be used to support research-based methods for delivering high-quality reading instruction to all of our learners. I shared this article on my last update back in November and said that Sika would not be the unicorn, that we would not be the only Alaska district that escapes hard budget decisions this year. We are beginning our budget season now, and while we are not seeing some of the same effects that other districts across the state are facing, we are not immune to the funding crisis affecting Alaska's schools. To go to what Felix said earlier, there was a Senate bill that dropped today that had a recommendation of $1,000 for the BSA, and those are conversations that we're still, you know, kind of tracking and following. But like other districts in our state, the Sika School District is facing unprecedented budget challenges. The district has seen significant increases to fixed costs such as employee health insurance and staff salaries, and also increases as a result of negotiated agreements and step movement. Funding from the state, which represents the majority of the district's funding, has not kept pace with inflation. District enrollment is stabilizing, but, you know, we still have to address some of the budget shortcuts that we are facing, and, you know, hopefully we'll continue to have more students come in. With a significant projected deficit of over $2 million, work is still underway to balance the FY '24 budget. The board must present a balanced budget to the assembly by May 1st. We're continuing, the board has continued to hold multiple hearing sessions to garner community feedback to guide their budget development process. The district is also closely monitoring retirements, resignations, and looking at ways to help balance the budget through managed staff attrition. So really, it's important to remember that the majority of the SSD budget is tied up in personnel costs. So it's unrealistic to think balancing the budget will not impact staff programs or potentially the pupil-teacher ratio. Any reduction that we face right now is going to have an impact on our classrooms. And so, you know, we'll just continue to have those hearing sessions, and you can see those dates, and we wanted to make sure that the community was aware of that as well as we are continuing to move forward. At this time, I would like to invite Mike Bartolava, the Sika School District Maintenance Director. He is going to talk to us about just some of the projects that are on the horizon as the district looks towards next year and trying to be proactive in addressing any, you know, maintenance issues and being preventative or looking at potentially upcoming projects that are coming. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Bartolava.
Hello. Mike Bartolava, Maintenance Director. So I just want to thank you for your service and support for our community and the district in general, and the maintenance department in particular. Let's see, I think the last time I was up here, we were talking about heat pumps at Blatchley. They are installed and operational and have been now for at least six weeks. We're still waiting on building, building control that will help the new units talk to the old system. We have a new hire. Our maintenance staff is fully staffed now as of December 27th. New hire is working out well. Personality fits in well with our existing staff and brings a diverse skill set that complements the skill sets of our existing staff very well. And he started the certification process for a boiler cert, for a boiler certification. And right now, we are looking, we're starting to look toward our summer projects for this As always, that'll include refinishing our hardwood floors in our gyms, bandrooms, et cetera, as well as playground work and anything we can do outside as far as painting and that kind of stuff. I believe this list was in your board pack. I just wanted to go over some of them very quickly. The heading says FY '24 maintenance projects. There's like 14 items on here, not all of them we will be able to do in the coming fiscal year. However, I just wanted to touch on a few of them. Blatchley Middle School heating units. The outdoor units have been replaced and are working well, however, the indoor units are now nine to 11, 18, yeah, nine to 11 years old. They have a life expectancy of 12 to 18 years, so we're going to need to start replacing them. There's 48 total units, and the idea is to replace one zone at a time, which is nine to 11 units per year over the next five years. Item number two is Sika High School vocational edition heat pump. It's the same unit that we replaced both at Pacific High as well as the heat pumps that were replaced at Blatchley. It's still operating well, however, it, like the other units, does not like cold weather, especially when it drops into the teens or sink digits. It doesn't run as efficiently or as well. Kikushin Fire Alarm Control Panel is item number three. The existing panel is operational but needs a new LCD screen. Replacement parts are difficult to find as it's an older unit, and they don't make that unit anymore. Item number four, DMS swimming pool. We need a new, we will need eventually, a new onsite sodium hyperchloride generator, which is our chlorpene chloromatic. It's an older model, and parts and service are becoming hard to come by. Also, this summer, we were, we were expecting to replace the expansion joint on the pool as well as replace the sand filters. Blatchley Middle School Elevator Control. It's an old Dover model. Our, our other elevators in the district are Otis. Our service contract is with Otis. The Dover model is no longer manufactured, and parts are being hard to come by. I think the only parts that Otis is able to find for it now is on eBay. And then items six and seven are both for SHS vocational wing of the building, a new, we're looking at replacing the woodshop dust collector. The existing unit was designed for a shop that is half the current size. And also a new air compressor for the CTE shop. The compressor is now too small, and a larger size is needed for its usage demand. Increasing the side, increasing the size would enable that space to get and use new air-powered equipment. And then, see, the last one I'll talk about is item number nine, SHS underground fuel tank recertification. That is currently scheduled for the week of February 13th. The other items on here are smaller, but those are the major, those are the major ones that we are, that are on our list for right now.
I, it's not necessarily a question, but I do want to thank you for your patience and for your continued ability to show up and provide these vital statistics and support and reports of how our buildings need continued maintenance, how we can continue to go about looking into what is needed to capital projects, the major issues that we may have to look at to continually ensure that there is, that our children are safe. And I'm happy to hear that you have someone helping you. And just thank you. Overall, your information is completely necessary, and you are a vital component to our district. And everything that you do in report ensures that we are able to continue to provide education within the buildings itself. The night we've heard about buildings and programs and children advancing, but you and your hard work and you're making and helping this actually happen. So while you have the vital reports as reported tonight and the concerns that we have moving forward, especially during the budget process, thank you. I know your time is important as well, but the board needs to hear this so that we can do our best to, to see what we can do to resolve all the things that would help you do what you do.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board?
Thanks for waiting. I was the last one.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. So we'll continue to update the board as we move forward and as, you know, we look at maintenance needs and, you know, demands that we have, we'll go ahead and continue to update and make sure everyone has kind of a continued, you know, notification of, you know, some of the maintenance work we're doing and some of the kind of funding we're doing. I just wanted to make sure we updated the board on some of the projects that are on the horizon and, and stuff. Thank you, Mr. Bartolava. I really appreciate that. And lastly, for my board, lastly for my board report, just a couple of announcements. We do have on February 2nd, which is tomorrow, the Kikushin and Blatchley Middle School Staff Hearing Sessions. February 7th is Kikushin Geography B. February 8th is the Policy Community Meeting. February 9th is the Community Budget Hearing. February 16th is an early release date for Elizabeth Prochus Day. And with that, that concludes my superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Moving on to item 13, new business. Item 13A, FY '23 Budget Revision.
I move to approve the FY '23 budget revision as presented.
Actually, could I have a motion out going down? Obviously, John Adam. Can I get a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve FY '23 Budget Revision as presented. Is there any public comment? Any more comment? The motion on the table is to approve FY '23 Budget Revision as presented. Is there any opposition to the motion?
No, but I did have a question. Just looking at the budget in special education, there was a large decrease in one aspect, but I think that was filled in a different special education. I'm just trying to find it again because I was reading through. But there was going to be a... I just wanted to clarify if the change that I saw in the... Because there was going to be, yeah, so in the special education support, there's been a percent decrease of 28.15%. Is that... Could you just explain what's going on?
No, absolutely. Thanks for the question. So as we were going through, turning up and looking at the budget, there was a move from function 220 Special Education Support and 200 Special Education Education. And really what it was is trying to redistribute and really try to reflect instructional administrative distribution changes that have happened. Really, the budget reduction is really, between those functions, is due to the anticipation of no longer paying a higher rate to a third-party service provider for physical therapy services. And so it was something that we were able to provide, having a qualified district staff employee. So that's why you see that shift from 200 to 220, you see a reduction in 220 and then an increase in 200 because this education supports were the contract and the education instruction is the new. So that's why you see, it's kind of just a switch of where that comes from. And there was a savings as well in that, that move that we have. So that was actually a savings for the district, being able to bring that, the PT in-house. And so just wanted to make sure that that was reflected. And then just, you know, any other questions on that one?
No, that answered it. I was just wondering, what was the reason behind that switch?
Mr. Myers, can I, can I clarify that your answer was, I mean, your question was answered?
Sorry, yes.
The motion on the table is to approve FY '23 Budget as presented. Is there any opposition to the motion? There will be a roll call vote needed. Felix Myers. Mitch Moore.
Yes.
Melanie Ford.
Yes.
Todd Gebler.
Yes.
Tristan Devon.
Yes.
Lawson Till Olson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Felix nicking a vote on the button.
Moving on to item 13, the approval of FY '22 audit. I have a motion for this agenda item.
I move to accept FY '22 audit as presented.
May I get a second?
I've got some comments. When do I need to talk? A second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept FY '22 audit as presented. Is there any public comment?
Good evening. I'm there again. I was hoping... Good evening. Like there again, I was hoping because I don't often get a chance to talk again. I just hope the board considers delaying a vote on this to give us more time to the process for coming up with a solution to the internal control finding. Do you think that there's more voices that need to be heard and a solution that can be come together as a team and do something that's going to work for all the parties involved? And I just feel like we haven't had that chance yet. So I hope we can delay this and have a chance to work through this as a whole district. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Is there any board comment?
Yeah, so my understanding of this, so the the one that Mr. Gare is talking about is this was considered a material weakness, not any kind of compliance finding. So we are so it's not required. It is a internal control weakness. They are clear in this audit that that doesn't mean that it's that it would fix it if we move it. We're not even really sure what what this weakness was. I mean, like completely, I mean, there's talk that there was there was delayed reporting. My understanding is this the reconciliation happens monthly and I don't know what frequency is required. But this comes down to communication. Obviously, it wasn't communicated to people involved. And I believe that is the business office. And from my understanding, the communication between the sites and the business offices tends to be not so great. So if we can't communicate that this is changing, that same, those same groups are going to need to communicate after the change. It needs to be fixed before we can go down this path. I think the communication has to be fixed. This has been going for, I don't know, a long time, 30 years. In the same way, we've basically been carrying that internal control risk for 30 years. And it's been working as far as I know. But this is the first that anybody's heard that it's not working. So again, communication, if we can if we can simply come up with a shorter, I mean, if a month doesn't work, maybe biweekly, whatever it is to mitigate that risk, we don't have to do anything special. It's just a conversation. So I think we should delay talking about this or voting.
Any other board on Mr. Gare? Mr. Gare?
Yeah, so I guess I have a little bit of a different take on this. And I guess the first thing I would say is I totally understand where staff are coming from. You know, as a project manager, a department director, and even in my current role, I have to jump through account payable, account receivable hoops, and it's a total pain. You know, so I definitely feel for that and the concern around that. I do have an understanding, this is something that has been discussed with the administrative team previously and something that actually came up in previous years. It wasn't an audit finding, but it was something that we knew internally, you know, would create an audit finding. And I think that's the other piece, that this is an audit finding. There may be three different levels of severity in that audit finding, and this is kind of that middle one. But I think if we don't address this, it becomes a significant finding. So I think we're, you know, as the people, you know, as the board who has fiduciary responsibility over the district finances, I think we do need to address this. You know, and there are the GAAP principles, the general accepted accounting principles. And, you know, there are laws we need to follow in terms of how money is handled, how money is stored, how checks are stored. You know, we've gone through some similar stuff at STA. You know, money checks have to be stored behind a locked door and in a lock safe, you know, or else it's going to create a legal liability and audit finding. You know, so I think when you look at this audit finding, these bank statements weren't being reconciled, you know, with the general ledger. And so I think that's something we need to ensure happens. We need to, you know, support the superintendent and the business office in ensuring that happens. And I think the only way that that does happen is is through some kind of level of centralized control. I think that's why we have a district business office, is that's the entity that needs to oversee money for the district revenues, expenses. You know, one of the things I noticed in the budget revision, one of those increased costs is around the module for P cards, purchasing cards. So I'm assuming that might be factored in here in terms of how we can address some of those concerns that staff brought up. But I don't think we're going to, you know, the business office, central administration, isn't going to put coaches or, you know, extracurricular folks in the situation where they don't have money, where they're getting stuck for travel. So you know, my my impression of this is, you know, our auditors have come back with a finding and we're responsible for addressing that finding, our business office, as the office that handles revenues and expenses for the district that is responsible for reconciling the general ledger and ensuring all this happens. You know, this is the process they've set forth, you know, in those GAAP principles. Again, I know, you know, we've gone through some similar kind of pains and it's, you know, pain in the butt when you don't have that exact control. But it's something I think that we need to do to be in compliance with the law and in compliance with those GAAP principles. So from my perspective, I would probably accept this, I would accept this audit.
Any other board comment?
Got a comment here? My understanding is that this is a audit of internal control. So they are just testing internal control and it's not a compliance violation. The, it's just testing and saying, do we, if we look at all these, all these systems and procedures, are we, are any of these, do we have internal control on all of these? And I don't, so I don't know all the ins and outs of how this procedure works, but they are reconciling everything. And I, my understanding is that, I don't know, I don't know how it goes from the high school to the general ledger. But my point is until there's communication with, between the district office and the site and they fully understand that they aren't competent to do this or that we are putting extra work in the business office that is unnecessary, I don't think we should vote on this.
Mr. Hauser, for matters of procedure, thank you, Mr. Moore, for your answers. Please.
And Ms. Board, I apologize. I just, I know that you had your hand up. I did ask Ms. Teleson. I just, I want to provide some clarification just about the audit really fast. We can have the conversations about the findings and the centralized versus decentralized accounting. But I also think it's important, I wanted to point out, the audit is just the audit. So the board is going to approve the audit. We have to approve an audit, you know, and that's part of the process for reporting to the state. So the approving of the audit approves that, you know, we had an audit, we had these two findings. It doesn't say that we are, you know, locked into a process for which we are reporting. We are going through, and it was a finding. So I just want to make sure when we talk about either approving or not approving the audit, that we go through, we have an audit, we have to have an approved audit, the audit have findings, that if you approve the audit, that does not say that, you know, we are locked into this process of how we do business. We're still going to go through and try to follow the general accounting principles. We received a report from our auditors that said you need to fix the student activities accounts and centralize them under the district's systems. And we can have, you know, Ms. Young or Business Manager come up to talk about some of the specifics. But I just wanted to before, just wanted to provide that clarification. We're just approving the audit. We're not necessarily approving, you know, the business office functions. And it's important that we actually have an approved audit because we have to report that to the state. And so that, I just wanted to make sure I provided that clarification for the board as we continue to have discussion.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hauser. And I appreciate all the board's input on this matter. Hi, thank you. Well, I'm used to having the circular board, so if I did not see Mrs. Board speak or hold her hand at my apologies. I understand you want to speak to this. Please do.
Thank you and thank you for your information on this, Mr. Hauser. And because that's how I'm reading it, this, I'm not seeing that this says the, the control of spending moves from the the high school to the district office. I'm not seeing that. I'm just seeing that the finding and the recommendation is that bank accounts need to be reconciled to the general ledger on a monthly basis. So I also feel like we need to approve the audit. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mr. Gare, go ahead.
So in light of that, Frank, so we, we're obligated to accept it?
It's
What is our, what is our obligation to this?
We have to have, we have to have an approved audit. This is our audit and the auditors came back and presented that. We did have two findings. The two findings that were identified for the audit were the lack of internal controls over student activity bank reconciliations, which is what has been, you know, talked about during public testimony. And really what the recommendation and what our current active plan, because as, as we go through the audit, we as the district have findings on that audit, we have to put together a corrective action plan for that audit. And so what we are, and we have been in this process because this has been something that the auditors have been telling the district for a number of years, actually before I became the superintendent. And we heard last year during the meeting with the auditors as well is that the activities funds and those decentralized accounts that are outside of the internal operating of the district office needed to be brought back into, you know, the district office for that centralized systems for operating and training and being able to track the expenditures. And also as we get ready to report to the auditors as well, they're all under our accounts. And so I can, if the board of life can have the business office, Ms. Young, come up and speak to just some of the specifics. And also I think it's important to kind of speak to some of the concerns. I mean, we're not taking away the control of the funds from the buildings. The funds are still available for the buildings and so that's all there. But as far as the audit goes, you know, we, this is our audit, it's our findings. There were two findings in the audit. We, and we strive to not have any findings. The second finding was around labor reporting of non-compliance with reporting requirements. And it was just, we were, when they were going through and looking at some of the grants, we have to report them by a certain day and there was a lack of reporting around that timeline. And so as we go through, I mean, we have to have an approved audit. This is our audit. It does not necessarily have anything to do with some of the comments that were being talked about here, short of it was a finding that we're trying to, to work through and find a corrective action to address that finding. So in the future, we don't continue to have the same finding, which could escalate and ultimately result in, you know, essentially more significant findings.
So passing, passing the audit does not mean that we can't have dialogue with with Gare and somehow come to an agreement?
Passing the audit is just us passing the audit. I mean, as we go through and we're, you know, we have been talking to the principals about the process. We have a number of schools that have actually transitioned over and they're, they have become now centralized in our accounting system too, and they're still functioning. And so, you know, that is, that's, that's moving forward as we are going through. So as we adopt this audit, we're still going to go through the process of, you know, how we're going to be managing, you know, student activities accounts and accounts that are decentralized, not in the district's accounting system. Did that answer the question that you were looking for? We're just, we're just going to approve, we're deciding whether we're going to, what's, the motion is really, are we going to approve the audit? And we need to have an approved audit, you know, moving forward. We can have other conversations about the process in which, and we are going to continue to have conversations about the process in which we, you know, work towards compliance with the recommendations of our auditors.
Past day when accepting this audit is not correct?
That is correct, yes.
So I do have a comment as well. I do want to keep it short because the sentiments have already been stated. I do agree with Board Member Avon and Board Member Board. We have findings. We need to be, it is our fiduciary responsibility to to conduct business lawfully and follow the laws as presented. And when the audit happened and to have these findings, they gave us their professional, their professional opinions as how to fix this and how to be in compliance. And so this is an ongoing conversation and it will continue to be. And I, you know, I don't believe in speaking if I don't need to. But yes, I thank the board for their questions and for their clarifications and for the comments made by Mrs. Board and Mr. Avon. And thank you, Mr. Hauser, for your clarification. And I think it would be best for having those data and clarify.
Ms. Young, would you please come up and just provide, just a couple of clarification points just for, you know, how the process is moving at, moving forward?
Hi, Leslie, I'm the Business Manager. Thank you for sort of on the school. Just briefly, global control will remain of spending and deposits and transactions. Our guidance will stay the same at the school. It'll be a little bit of our and her with a different system that will be hopefully transitioning everywhere too. Currently, we have four accounting systems within the district that obviously are challenging for a semester. So we had three accounting staff leave us with them last year. That obviously left us in quite a lot of quandary to kind of get the new staff transitioned into that. So we're trying to centralize into one accounting system. So transitions are easily remedied and we can support each other as we move forward with that kind of stuff. Of course, we will be receiving some funding from the city that we'll have to be accountable for and report on. And so we want to make sure that we are, have that in place for any requirements that the city might have for us, for reporting requirements to, for the proposition money that they will be getting. So we're trying to reduce redundancies in this software. We're here to support the staff that transition in and out so we can make sure that that was transitional. These are out there. If anything, we'll provide more support to the current staff. So when schools are closed, we will actually be able to make a deposit for them if we have to. Right now, with that challenging, we usually typically hold the money that we receive over winter break or summer break. And we have to hold it with an R safe. And it's challenging for a deposit because of the reconciling. Because if we deposit it, we'd have to record that within the month that we're reconciling it. And then we have, when transitions happen, we have, again, five bank accounts that have to have five signatures, get changed every time when a new staff member joins. And then just getting us all added on. So there's lots of things, pros and cons. Of course, it's a change. Change, I've been here for 30 years. Change, I've been here for 30 years. I have been at the school level, and I've seen transactions come through, and yes, we want to get people paid fast. One of the things we have implemented is providing ACH payments. So when transaction is processed, they'll just go right to your account. You won't get a check. They'll just go right to your account. So when we're dealing with reimbursements to staff, once they sign up, they won't get a check, they'll just get it deposited. And again, those are some of the things we're trying to get in place as we make these transitions. And again, we've had discussions with Secretary of Staff already. I believe we're going to be talking in more detail about some transitional levels with administrators continuing. And then we'll probably be talking to the board next month on some updates on directions to go with student accounting and student activities. Questions?
Yeah. I still have a question about continuing that communication with administrators, because it seemed to me from what Mr. Krupa was saying was that he felt as if there was no communication occurring. He was not aware that there was going to be a continuing conversation in the future. So do our administrators know, or have they been communicated with that even if we pass the audit, there is going to be an ongoing conversation to figure out what is the best scenario going forward?
Yeah, and I'll answer that question. We have had conversations about, you know, this transition take place. I talked to the administrators if this process is going to be happening. Like I said, we have actually transitioned a couple of our buildings to the new system as we had new, you know, front office staff come in to make sure that instead of training them in one system, we brought them on to the new system. And so we're working through that process of making sure that we're having that. We are going to continue to have conversations. We have a staggered rollout of the, you know, process and how we're going to be working through. And we've been having, we just had some trainings with some of the office staff as well, bringing them and having conversations. It's an ongoing process. We're going to continue to provide that support. The goal is, again, not to take the control away from the buildings, but making sure that we're trying to, like you said, centralize with the recommendation of our auditors and making sure that, you know, we're, we're running efficiently and making sure we're following all of the general accounting principles, the cap principles.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. I have another question. Seeing that, the scene, the motion on the floor is to accept that FY22 audit as presented. May we have a roll call vote? Felix Myers?
Yes.
Melanie Borden?
Yes.
Mitch Moore?
So just to be clear, this is, the corrective action plan that's in this is not, we're not approving that, right?
For clarification, if you approve the audit, that corrective action plan is in the audit. And so that's the plan that we have in place right now for the, the audit moving forward as per the request. And our response to that finding, that we had to have a corrective action plan, and that's how we're moving forward to address the finding that the auditors provided us around these student activities accounts.
So there is no other option, right?
At, at this point, that was the, when the auditor said, we have a finding, there's a lack of internal control of student activities, bank reconciliations. They asked for a corrective action plan on our part. That was the corrective action plan that we moved forward was to provide those centralized accounting of those activity accounts that are out there.
Okay. And we've already done this at multiple schools, right?
Yeah, two schools, right? Yeah.
Yeah. And if I'm, if I'm, if I'm thinking of the same thing, I don't think they're happy with it. I'm not, I'm not really sure what to do. So also, it's not a compliance thing that keeps getting thrown around. It's not compliance for this, right? But this one, this specific one is.
It is a recommendation from our auditors that we centralize our accounts to, you know, make sure that we're, you know, following the best practices as recommended by our auditors. You know, when our auditors tell us that, you know, you're going to have a finding because you don't have, all these accounts are not centralized under one, you know, district centralized account, it puts the district at risk, you know? And so that's, you know, that's what we're trying to do, is making sure that we're, you know, following the recommendations of our auditors, and when there's a finding, we are trying to address that. And that's what we are doing, and was a recommendation to bring those accounts in, into our centralized accounting system. And so that's what we, that's what we're doing to meet that requirement that we have when there's a finding.
Okay. And you guys will, so just speaking of risk, all the risk to kids that, that was brought up, that is adequately mitigated?
There should not be, if there's an issue that happens, I mean, if somebody needs to grab their P card and book some hotels at 10:30, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night, we'll still reach out to Mr. Krupa or whoever that is and say, hey, we have this situation. They'll have access to P cards, they'll be able to, they'll do the work they need to do. This is, this is not going to have any impact on their ability to actually do their work. It's about some of the internal controls that we have to make sure through reconciliations, trying to streamline the process that we have. There shouldn't, there, there will not be a situation, you know, where they will not be able to address any concerns like that. It's not a matter of they have to wait until Monday morning to get a cut, check, a check cut from the, you know, business office to pay for a hotel room that is, you know, an emergency to, to get. There's, that's, I think there's a misunderstanding of, you know, we've talked to principals about this, we're working through the process of rolling this out. I, I understand the concern that was expressed. I, I'm not sure that there's a full understanding of what's actually going to be happening, you know? So maybe that's something that, you know, I'll have a conversation and bring some concerned individuals in and talk about the process that we're, you know, looking at to make sure and reassure them with some of the other, you know, that they will still be able to function, and we're not taking away their ability to, you know, charge in case of emergency or charge if they need to order something.
Okay. I agree.
All right. Actually, I'm going to interject. Seeing that this, I'm going to count this as board comment and discussion, so I'm going to roll that back and restart. The motion on the floor is to accept that FY22 audit as presented. Roll call vote. Tristan, go ahead. If we, oh, please, this table, this table is not friendly, but, you know, maybe if we stand up.
From shortest to tallest or... Just because we've used a little bit of jargon, the P cards, I don't know that that term is universally known, but those are purchasing cards, they're credit cards. And if you go back and look at our budget revision within the memo that Leslie produced for us, thank you, Leslie, says student activity accounts are transitioning from decentralized to centralized accounting. Additional data processing support was needed for the initial setup and for modules within the district accounting system to interface with procurement cards or P cards. So just wanted to make that clear, that, you know, they'll have access, like Superintendent Hauser said, to credit cards that could pay for the hotel or whatever other expenses come up last minute.
Thank you for your comment and clarification. Any more board comment? Seeing that, actually, hopefully I, the issues tonight, at this point, I seen that the motion on the floor is to accept that FY22 audit as presented. Done. We need a roll call vote. Felix Myers?
Yes.
Melanie Borden?
Yes.
Mitch Moore?
Yes.
Tristan Yvonne?
Yes.
Todd Getler?
Yes.
Lawson Pielolston?
Yes.
Motion passed. While we have more items on the agenda to discuss, I do want to make like that we are running tight on time. This does not mean that the items that were, are to be discussed are less important, but we do have a time constraint. So moving forward, and we still have executive, we do still have executive session. We do have the power to postpone some items if motions are presented.
We're looking to postpone some items, is that what we're kind of thinking? What time do we need to be done by?
We need to be done by 10, well, I mean...
I can read them. Want me to read them?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Don, would you mind reading the bylaws that outline, just so everybody's clear on our time constraints?
Board bylaw 9320 reads, in part, "Meetings will adjourn at 10:30 p.m. Alaska Standard Time. Unless a majority vote of the board, the meeting is extended 30 minutes to 11 p.m. Further 30-minute extensions will require each a separate motion that will require a unanimous vote of those members present and constituting the quorum."
Thank you, Don. In light of your reading and reminder of the board bylaws, it is up to the board, not one, I do not speak for the board, nor can I, I do not speak for the board, I cannot do anything alone for our bylaws, and I do not want to. But with the time constraints, item, is there any wish to postpone any items on the agenda due to our time constraints so that we meet our board bylaws?
I requested that 13C be on here. Other people may have done that as well, but I feel like that one's not super time-sensitive. So if we wanted to table that for the next meeting, it was really about putting the draft proposal out into the public domain and for the full board to consider. And so I think, you know, that could, could wait another month, and people could take more time to read what is posted in the agenda and think about it for the next meeting. So I'd be fine doing that. I would move to, I would move to table item 13C, the discussion on reestablishing committees to the March meeting.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded to postpone item 13C to discuss reestablish committees.
The motion to table is not debatable. So we'll just take a vote.
Thank you. Let's take a vote.
Mr. Myers?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Board?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Yvonne?
Yes.
Mr. Getler?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Moving on to item 13D, committee liaison assignments. This is another discussion point. Again, time constraints. I move to postpone item 13D, committee liaison assignments, to the March meeting. Is there a second? Seeing that the motion fails.
I'll second.
Okay. Well, all right. It's been moved and seconded to move item 13D, the discussion of committee liaison assignments pertaining to UAS Sika Campus Advisory Council Board Liaison Appointment to the March School Board Meeting. Right, Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Board?
I think I have to say no because there's no opposition, right? Okay. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Yvonne?
No.
Mr. Getler?
Uh, no.
Myself, yes. Can I change my vote?
So we have, we have two yes votes and three no votes, the motion fails.
All right. Moving on to item 13D, committee liaison assignments. This is a discussion for the UAS Campus Advisory Council Board Liaison Appointment. Discussion.
Each of the campuses, Juneau, Ketchikan, and Sika have a UAS Campus Advisory Council. I've been serving on the council as a staff representative for STA for the past about two, three years. And I brought this forward. I would like the, the board to consider appointing me as the board liaison to that council. The, up until this point, there, there hasn't been school district representation, although that's one of the specified seats there. I believe that Frank has, has talked to Sanja Ludwig, the principal at Sika High School, who's going to start attending from the staff perspective, but that still leaves, you know, an opening for a board member. And so I wanted to bring this forward and have the board approve me serving on that UAS Sika Campus Advisory Council as the representative from the Sika School Board. Also, the reason I felt this was timely is there's also the appointment of Melanie to the policy committee. I wanted to, to step down from that committee. I'd like to focus my time on the reestablishment of the strategic planning committee, as well as that goal of the mid to long-term view of the budget. And so I feel like that's just a little bit too much for me to take on. Melanie doesn't currently have any committee appointments, and when we made the appointments in October, she said that the policy committee was her number one choice. The, the policy committee has just wrapped up several proposed policy changes, and so I felt like now is a good time to transition out. So there aren't any of those conflicts with open meetings that, I feel that if, as we go into these new policies, Title IX, some of the other ones that we haven't yet spoken about at the committee, if I was to be involved in those, I'd have to see that through, through the school year, so that no more than two of us would be involved in those discussions. So just to summarize, my request would be for the board to approve me serving as the board liaison to the UAS Sika Advisory Council, and I would support Melanie taking my place on the policy committee.
Is there any more discussion on this matter? Is there a motion on the table to appoint Tristan to the UAS Advisory Council?
Just wondering, do we need motions? Or just kind of the unanimous consent of, I guess, the disagreeing? Similar to October?
Does the board agree that Tristan Yvonne be appointed to the UAS Advisory Council? Is there any opposition to Tristan being appointed? Is there any opposition to Tristan being appointed to the UAS Advisory Council? Seeing none. Tristan, congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to Melanie, taking, moving into the place of Mr. Gavon's spot on the policy committee, is there any opposition to Ms. Board taking Mr. Gavon's seat on the policy committee? Seeing none, congratulations, Ms. Board.
Thank you.
You've been, will be on the policy committee, I'm excited. Thank you. Moving on to item 13E, adoption of BP 1332, naming of schools, facilities, fields, and other areas first reading.
I move to adopt board policy 133.
Not a motion, where is the agenda?
I move to adopt board policy 1332, naming of schools, facilities, fields, and other areas on first reading.
Is there any public comment? Is there a second? Second. Is there any public comment? Is there any board comment? Mr. Gavon?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna, I was just gonna...
Go right ahead, Mr. Gavon.
All right, sounds good. So, so this is a policy that, this is a brand-new policy for the district, one that the policy committee has been considering since the beginning of the year, and, you know, really just wanted to say a note of appreciation for the policy committee, this, this policy and then the associated administrative regulation that's here for our review. It took a lot of time. We come, we went through both of those several times, lots of word spitting, lots of editing, lots of, you know, good discussion around that, and so as you see, the, the board policy is, is pretty concise and really just references, you know, that, that we will do this in a way that is consistent with our mission, vision, and values, and then the administrative regulation spells out those processes. And again, I just really appreciate, you know, the public for their input, this, the draft policy actually came in from a public, or a, a community member within the board, because I think, you know, it's really good in terms of the representation, in terms of ensuring that, or the committee that proposes the name, it spells out a nice process that involves that committee developing the plan, that includes steps for community engagement, and, you know, so it really, I think, you know, what I guess I would say in closing is, is, as a district, we, we learned from the Bearinoff Elementary School renaming process, and I think we've created a policy and an associated administrative regulation that is going to make these processes better in the future, while also just really maintaining that community engagement aspect and ensuring that the community is well represented and the tribe, as our government-to-government partner, is represented there as well.
I do want to add, thank you, Mr. Gavon, being part of the policy committee, I do, I do agree that there's, there has been extensive time and considerable thoughtful process through this whole creation of the, this policy. I do want to take a moment and just highlight the dedication of Ms. Board at the time. When the previous board decided to move forward with renaming Bearinoff Elementary School, we, we did so in the best interest of the district at the time, and going through the process, it was very quickly, it was very quickly realized that the, the direction and suggestions of how the process was done, simply because an old process of a former renaming happened years before and that seemed to work. You know, times change, and quickly we realized that to be productive and to have the full community input and to have everyone present at the table was more important than, you know, making this renaming the way quick or, or convoluted as it turned out to be in hindsight. So, I just want to congratulate and say that it has come full circle, and at the time, I was a young board person and I had, had to figure out, you know, just how to, how to go about this, and at the time, Ms. Board was a person of the public, and she stepped forward and brought a, a beginning of the, a, a policy, and from that, this work began, and tonight, and tonight we have this policy here to, to vote on. So, thank you very much for your dedication and for stepping up, and, you know, I am looking forward to the district acting on this, so, thank you. The motion on the table is to adopt BP 1332, naming of school, facilities, fields, and other areas in first reading. Is there any opposition to the motion? If there's no opposition, the motion passes. Moving on to item 13A, review of AR 1332, naming of schools, facilities, schools, and An AR as a district policy does not need to be approved by the board. Once BP 1332 has been adopted after a second reading, the AR states that the school board will direct the superintendent to establish the naming committee, which will reflect the diverse demographic of Seca-Seca School District.
Really, just to speak to this, I think, Ms. Gavon spoke to this, when you talked about the board policy, this is just administrative regulation that helps outline the actual process to go through and establish that naming committee, and so if there's any questions, but this was a process that the policy committee and I was, you know, really impressed and just proud to be a part of the process going through and coming up with a, an AR that outlines a process that does get a lot of community input and is very clear and, you know, very community-focused and getting the feedback about the naming or renaming process, and so if there's any questions about the AR, we just wanted to make sure, like Ms. Tealson said, the, the AR does not need to be approved, it is an internal kind of district office or process that we put together, but this really AR was created and generated by, you know, the feedback from the policy committee and really trying to create a, a process that was really community-focused and got feedback and transparent in its, in its process moving forward, and so with that, I just wanted to, you know, thank the policy committee too for providing that voice to the formation of the AR and also to Ms. Board, who at the time was, you know, gave us kind of a starting point, so just wanted to make sure that we presented it so the board had a chance to look at it and provide any comments if they had any.
Any comments? Seeing none.
Oh, sorry. I just want to say thank you to the policy committee for making this relevant to Sheikka and to our tribal community and keeping that in mind and making it an inclusive process,
Moving on to item 13G, approval of BP 0430, Community Recreation Program First Reading. I have a motion up for this agenda item.
I move to approve for policy 0430, Community Recreation Program, first reading.
A second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve BP 0430, Community Recreation Program First Reading. Is there any public comment? Is there any board comment?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I have indigenous pause. Sometimes it takes time for me to move on to my next line of what my mouth is going to say words, but thank you for looking after me, Don. Motion on the table is to approve BP 0430, Community Recreation Program First Reading. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, the motion passes. Moving on to item 13H, approval of BP 130, 1330, pardon me, Use of School Facilities in First Reading. Could I have motion for this agenda item?
I move to approve for policy 1330, Use of School Facilities, on first reading.
I take a second. A motion has been, a motion has been made and seconded to approve BP 1330, Use of School Facilities, First Reading. Is there any public comment? Is there any board comment? The motion on the table is to approve BP 1330, Using Use of the School Facilities, First Reading. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, the motion passes. All right, moving on to item 13I, Executive Session, legal updates. The school board reserves the right to go into executive session as and to extend permanent by AS 44 dot 62310 and Board Bylaw 9321, and executive session may be called to consider the following subjects: One, matters the immediate knowledge of which would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the district; Number two, subjects intended to prejudice the reputation and character of any person, provided the person may request a public discussion; Number three, matters by, matters which by law municipal charter or ordinance are required to be confidential and for matters involving consideration of document records that by law are not subject to public disclosure.
I move that the board go into executive session in accordance with and under the provision of Alaska Statute 44.62.310C12. The matter to be discussed are legal, are legal update, attorney-client communication related to the application of the Open Meetings Act, scope of board member responsibilities, and to discuss a personnel matter. Mr. Howser, Mr. Cedar, and Ms. Teles are invited.
Is there a second?
A second.
As been moved and seconded for the board to go into executive session in accordance with and under the provisions of AS 44 dot 62310C1, the matter to be discussed is legal updates regarding SCA arbitration. Mr. Howser is invited.
Mr. Cedar.
And Ms. Teles.
And Ms. Teles are invited. Is there any public comment? Are there any board comments? Going to, going to executive session, thank you.
Cut to it, cut to it, that's right. Yeah, we, yeah, we should do, we're gonna move over next door. Yeah.